Okay, well, now that Michelle's here, we'll join the, no, I'm just kidding. Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning. I'll probably be on mute a lot.
That's okay. That's okay. We'll holler if we need you.
Sounds good. I'll be listening carefully.
Okay, as we kick off the work session, is there any non-arranged participation from anyone? There's not many people in the audience. I'm two online. Okay, we'll let the record reflect on range of participation. The main purpose of the workshop today is to let staff prepare or staff to share their budget that they prepared. Justin, I'm going to turn this over to you, let you take us through whatever you want to take us through and whatever order you want to take us through. Again, let's not talk over each other, but you know, if I'm looking down and reading something and you want to say something, just jump in as long as you're not cutting somebody else off. Okay, that way we can keep the dialogue going and stuff. There's a lot here.
Turn it over to you. Sure. So this is our first cut of the twenty-five, twenty-six recommended general fund budget and twenty-six, twenty-seven future projected budget. The going into the current fiscal year for the project, for you know, talking about a little bit of the current year's projected budget. Going into this fiscal year, the recommended proposed bu- budget was about one point six million expenditure over revenue. Primarily due to the public safety facility project and parks projects. It looks like both of those expenditures are not going to hit this fiscal year. And so essentially, everything is getting bumped out one year. So. Recommended. So, so, so leading, so at this time last year. The, 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 the recommended budget was one, one, one point six million. No, no, no. So I, I, I start off to talk, talking about where we are, where we are currently.
We are in twenty-four, twenty.
We're, we're currently in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. So, so yeah, to top, top of page one, the header is projected fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. But the, the, the first sentence under revenue and expenditures talks about the recommended, the recommended budget. Which is from this time last year. So that, that, that has changed. So that has changed significantly to be.
What he, what he's saying, Joe, is that the, the one point two three zero from general fund, we didn't move yet because we haven't had to spend it. And the three hundred and seventy-five thousand in parks projects.
Also isn't, isn't, isn't that likely to fall in this this year?
This year. So we did, we didn't, we didn't spend it or we didn't do it. I think that's what you're saying.
Correct.
There was an increase in the cost of participation for the.
Department. Yeah, but the projected revenue over expense now is a positive two hundred and two thousand four hundred. Per page twenty-one of the, of the packet. So. I can tell you. Same, same page, page twenty-one. The actual activity for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four was a positive four forty-six, seven forty-two. Four hundred and forty-six thousand.
Just printing money.
Well, so it, it, it's hard because a very significant pot of revenue is the local community stabilization front fund from the state. And half of it, we can't budget for because we're not guaranteed those dollars. Uh, so, so that is the personal property tax reimbursement. So a couple of years ago, the state essentially started doing away with personal property tax, but said, in lieu of that, we will give you, you know, the per, the personal property tax will come to the state. And the state will reimburse municipalities for, for what you lost. We have, that has actually been beneficial for us over the last couple of years where we've gotten more than, than we were probably getting prior to them taking away personal property tax. But essentially, half of it is statutory that, that they're, they're, they're guaranteeing us. The other half is, maybe you'll get it, maybe you won't. We'll see.
So how much guaranteed?
Uh, it was a hundred and sixty thousand.
What, what would they give us if they were so kind?
Three hundred to three fifty. Um, so I can tell you, uh, page ten of thirty-three. Uh, local community stabilization, one oh one, zero zero zero, five, seven, three. Fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four activity was actually four hundred and fifty thousand. But this year is so far a hundred and sixty-four thousand.
We're gonna, we're gonna get it. We're gonna get it.
We, we hope. I, 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 I mean, we, we, we have gotten it every year. But, but as, as soon as we start relying on it, then they're going to pull the rug out from under us. Even the statutory stuff seems to move around. Unless, unless it's constitutional.
All I need is what do me. All I need to pay is.
Well, what's, what's, what's do you is subjective in these states. This historical opinion. But, um, you know, in, in, in this year, um, you know, for example, we also had our administrative assistant position open for a little bit. We had our sixty P W open for a little bit. So you know, they're, they're, we've had our finance director in training position, uh, or finance director on deck position open for, for a while. Which all of those were budgeted. Even though we, you know, have attempted to fill all of those quickly as possible, there's still a lag. So you know, there's, there's benefit from that financial from, uh, you know, expenditure or not expenditure. Um, standpoint. Our, our D A F D cost did, did go up significantly. And barring changes, I would expect it to continue to go up. So that is page. Uh, so page sixteen of thirty-three. Uh, the projected, uh, departmental budget for this year is one point two 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 million. So, um, one million, two hundred and twenty thousand. Last year it was a little over a million and next year I've budgeted one point four million. Um, I know I have the percentages in here as well. Uh, their con, the last year of their contract is twenty-twenty-six, so we'll probably have to negotiate and talk with them in, in twenty-twenty-six. It's, it'll expire December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-six. Uh, this, this, this year is in-house negotiations with our union.
Trying to interject for this really quickly, it's a reminder that talking to the microphones, I had a chat come through. About people talking through, Sean and Justin are pretty clear, but everybody else is talking into your phone.
Thank you, sir. Hear that?
Yes, sir. Now I can hear you. I appreciate you.
So I talked about, um, fire department on page six of thirty-three. So current projected is twenty-seven percent of our general fund budget. Uh, budgeted is twenty-eight point seven four percent of our general fund budget and future projected twenty-six, twenty-seven is thirty point four percent of our general fund budget.
Any opinion at what point will we not be able to pay for it in your projection?
It, it is causing the general fund to be tight in the upcoming fiscal year.
It's thirty percent.
The, the, the hit this year was a lot. Um, but with the other, other stuff not happening, we're able to absorb it. But it's, it's, it's going to be putting pressure on the general fund budget immediately.
Well, I could say I was surprised, but I'm not really surprised. I mean, you see the quarterly go through.
Yeah, and, and, and you know, it's not a question of whether or not we can afford it. The question is, what else are we not doing? To, to, to make up that cost. And I, I know in, in a lot of communities, the, the first things that tend to go are, are the quality of life stuff, the parks, the A C H stuff.
Not a good projection.
What would, what would the percentage or what would the cost be projected if they were their own entity? You know, they formed their own board. They, we had a millage that was for everybody. Is there any way to project what that would look like percentage-wise?
Well, so, so I, I mean, I mean, at that point, it would take it down to pretty much zero.
Okay.
And so, you know, cut one point four out of the general fund budget.
It would come, you're right. It would come from. And it would make it fairer on all the communities too.
Well, that's depends on what community you're. That's a lot of it.
Would make better for our community.
Well, I don't know how the other community you're sitting, to be honest with you. I didn't know if it was.
There's fair and there's fairer. All dependent on your position at the time.
Yeah, so, so the, the, the things that, that the, the recommended, um, that's projected and recommended budgets. Don't take into account, um, are the the local community stabilization. Um, it doesn't take into account any additional growth. So like, um, I, I don't believe it takes into account like the, the, the changes with the Pelham, Kentwood and all that stuff. So I, I, I budgeted a flat three percent increase. From fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six to twenty-six, twenty-seven and.
Well, Kentwood be in the D B A though.
Uh, K, 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 Ken will be in the D B A. Um, Pelham will not. Um, it also doesn't take into account any additional potential contributions that the D B A will, would be interested in making that might impact general fund. Um, so if the D B A, for example, wants to contribute to the fire station. That's not reflected in here. If the D B A, uh, wanted to contribute to some other, you know, police fire service, something, you know, something in that realm, uh, that's not reflected in here. And then it also doesn't take into account. It's one of the major thing. That's making D B A contributions. The, the, the last thing will come to me, but I, I had it and I, and I lost it. So, so some of the major things that, that do impact, um, the general fund budget are obviously the, the increases to public safety services. For fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, I'm budgeting, uh, two and a half million dollar transfer out to the special projects fund. Um, if, you know, for any reason that project comes in under budget. Which, you know, I think we all, we all, we all hope that's the case. You know, that, that, that will make that look better. Oh, sale of property. Thank you. Yes. Yeah. The, uh, the, the sale of the map property. So if, if, if voters approve, um, the city to, to sell the property and, um, we are able to sell the property. And that falls in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six or twenty-six, twenty-seven. That will improve the, the, the overall look. Um, but again, that, that, that's a one-time revenue, but also the public safety facilities is a one-time expense. So, you know.
Justin, does that, does the budget include the four hundred thousand M D N R?
It does. Yeah. So it, it, it budgeted six hundred and fifty thousand for the milking playground. And then the offset, the partially offsetting revenue of the four hundred thousand for the, the trust fund. Um, and those are included in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
So. So tell me what you know about the timing of, of that.
So, uh, we are still waiting on the grant agreement, uh, from the M D N R. That was supposed, so they, they, they said it could be, uh, four to six months after, um, the notice that we were up, uh, recommended for approval of the award, which was when? January.
Okay, so if we get the grant agreement by the end of June.
Then with, with, we can go all, all guns forward. Um, we can, you know, get, uh.
And how much time do we have to spend?
I, I think we have. I want to say two years, but. I mean, my, 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 my goal would, would be to, to get it done as quickly as we can. From, from the time that, that we get the, the, the grant approval. For the, the, the grant agreement approved. Um, we will, as, as part of that, we, we will have to approve, um, a scope of work, um, for likely Smith Group. Um, that's, that, that's who we've been working with so far. And then we would go out to bid for the, for the structure and, and all of the, the site work. Get a, you know, get a bid, uh, get the bid approved and then.
Is, is the Smith Group part of the six fifty?
Yes.
So there's, there's, there's a chance of six fifty split to fiscal years then, right?
There, there, there's a chance. My, my, my hope was to get it done this fall slash winter. So that way, when, uh, when things open up from the fire station. The, the playground is also done and so it's all just open.
Don't you have the overlap of the two different projects though, trying to work in the same space?
Yes, but, um, for the most part, I, I think one, once they move inside, the, the amount of outside site work is going to be significantly less.
What is, it is, um, is the transfer out to general debt fund, the hundred and seventy-seven thousand or a hundred and seventy-six thousand?
Yes, yeah, that, 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 that's for the bond payment on this city hall.
That's what I thought.
Yep. Correct. Kind of, kind of going back to, to page one, um, you know, I listed out some of the things that we either started or worked on or completed in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Like getting public safety facilities through, uh, to construction. Um, bicentennial elections, um, putting in play handbook, getting the grand street trail connector completed, which now is, is open. Although it's, it's partially wood chipped. So when Brower is ready, he'll finish with the, the concrete. But, um, there, there are wood chips out to, out to Grand Street. Getting the, the city clerk position and the sixty P W. Oh, yeah, they. They, uh, they, they, they use our, our wood chips to, to wood chip, but. You know, I, 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 they're, 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 there's a big pile there that people are able to take for free. So.
No, they're basic at best. They're more like Phil.
So I, I listed out some of the things that council talked about on, uh, as part of goals and objectives. And then into, um, changes for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six on page three. So. Since the city council budget is proposed to remain relatively fat, flat, um, city manager budgets proposed to remain relatively flat except for salary increases and I rolled, um, ten thousand over into next fiscal year for a wage and benefits study. Um, I was hoping to get that started this year. Um, it just didn't end up happening, um, yet. So. But I think, I think we, we still want to, want to do that based on, um, goals and objectives conversations from, from last year. We don't have to do an O P E B study this year, but we will, or in, in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, but we will in twenty-six, twenty-seven. The finance director position, um, we, we had a second interview yesterday. But we also received notice that, uh, another candidate has come available. That, um, I think there's a lot of interest in. So we have another first interview on Monday and depending on who we get in. Who I think is likely to, to depend or will, will likely, um, impact how long Marie is, is going to stay with us into fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Oh, all the way to twenty-seven.
Marie has, has, has given me a hard, hard date that no matter what. But, um, if, if, if it works out with the candidate that we have scheduled for Monday, then it, it could be sooner rather than later. But we'll see. So, but a, a, along with that, um, there's, there's going to net, as a consequence be, um, changes in, in the assessing service as well. Over the last few years, Marie and Tom have been able to do all of the city. And get all of the properties, um, essentially reappraised or reassessed. And that, that's, that's been great. And essentially they're going to hand off to whoever the next assessor is a, like, clean role. The one that, that, you know, we, we can have a lot of confidence in. Um, and hopefully, you know, that will, will. This is true. Uh, it, 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 it was not as clean when we received it as it, as it, as it should be now. But, um, you know, hopefully whoever takes over, you know, will recognize that, that, that work has, has taken place and and, yeah, they, they, they probably won't, but we can, we can hope. And, and, and what that service looks like, I, it, it will likely be contracted. I, I've reached out to the city of Chelsea to see if, uh, they might have any interest in sharing someone. Um, they're, they're, they're currently contracting. It, it would be great if we could have another in-house person. But I, I don't think that the money makes sense for us to be on our own with an in-house assessor who is solely dedicated to assessing. But if we could team up with somebody to, you know, s- split a person full-time.
Staff, if there's anybody interested in doing that. I mean, I know there's a lot of training that's involved in it. I mean, obviously it took really quite a while to go through all the process and everything.
I, 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 I don't know that we have anybody who's, who's interested. Yeah, I, I, I don't think we have, we have anybody who, who is interested in, in taking that on. It says another part of their, their existing position.
Does that ever contracted out?
It was contracted for, for quite a while.
Is it a better to have in-house and share or?
I, I think there, there's more personal investment in someone who is in-house versus contract, but I mean, there, there, there's, there's nothing wrong with contracts. Um, I mean, there's no, I, I would, I would say more, more communities than not contract.
We can share somebody. That's great. I mean, they're connected and it's going to be. Analysis of the area benefits me.
Absolutely.
I, I think the from sitting with the, uh, border review and working with Marie, I think the more important thing is having somebody who is diligent and competent. And I mean, because we were a victim of incompetence when we became a city and we inherited all the stuff that we inherited.
Oh, I'm sure.
Well, I mean, because if you don't go out and get people who know what they're doing and are intelligent and doing what they're supposed to be doing and double checking it off. I mean, Marie spent, you know, four or five years going through all the stuff that was done and saying, this isn't right, this isn't right, this isn't right and fixing. Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, it, I'm not talking about minor things. I mean, I'm talking about major parts of the assessing that were done. That just didn't make any sense. So I mean, we have a great basis to start from. We just need somebody to not mess it up. So we need somebody who's qualified. And the problem with that is it either takes years to get somebody up to speed and qualified. Or you got a contract. I mean, there's no other options. Uh, unless you want it done bad.
No, no, I think that.
Serious, that's the only option.
I think that's exactly the point.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, uh, we were always treated as you know, a kind of a side thing. It was right, because there was a concentration and, you know, whatever. But we realized that back then and we took steps to alleviate that, which was becoming a city. So now that we aware of that.
The same problem that we're facing with the charter finance is that the, the assessors are aging out.
Right.
And there isn't a lot of interest in young people and coming in unless they're already part of a lot of the assessing world. It's like literally assessing families. So a lot of your contractors, it's a family business.
Right.
And in generations.
It's like accountants.
And there's nothing wrong with that, but it's just not something that most people say, I'm going to grow up and be an assessor. So it's hard, it's hard to find people. And then a lot of the assessors that are retiring are going to companies like, um, West, Western Wayne County Assessor or.
The, 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 W C A.
W C A.
Was that conglomerate?
Yeah, and so for the benefit, mostly because they get the benefit. But W C A will charge, you know, fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year.
For, well, one, one day a week in, in, in office person.
Because they can.
Because they can.
And because they're, you know, they're, they're providing benefits and they want.
There's a product there. Somebody's willing to pay fifty grand for it.
And that's one reason why I prefer starting to start with people at that time. Or, and I look at each other and that's a thing. But that's just the way it is.
Well, I think anybody that has a vested interest in the area, in addition to having a job is going to.
I, I agree with you.
You got to benefit us more than.
But, but we're, we're also not going to be able to get somebody to come in, you know, five days a week at fifty, sixty thousand dollars when they can go work for W C A, do the same thing and. They can go work for W C A, do the same thing and make.
No, and you know, there there's a reality. So how do we attract quality of life? Other benefits than I can think of, I don't know.
Well, and 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 that that's why I I I reached out to the city of Chelsea is, hey, you know, you guys are contracting. But you know, you you are also paying that premium. You know, it could could it be where, you know, there, you know, three days there or two and a half days there, two and a half days here. And we, you know, split it at forty, forty-five, fifty.
You ever talk to your manager?
Yep. Yeah, I I I've 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 talked a few times with with Marty.
Justin, how specific is the? Mill Creek Park Grant.
I have a question about that also. Done here, it says in the first paragraph, and I apologize for interjecting. Same line. It says excluding these expenses, general fund would be a hundred and eighty-four thousand expenditures over revenue. You list out a bunch of them, but you list six fifty for Mill Creek Park Playground and then says partially offset by four hundred thousand trust. So are we counting that as six fifty or are we counting that as two fifty?
So it's it's six fifty expense, four hundred thousand revenue.
But the one eighty-four, would the one eighty-four be five eighty-four if we didn't include the four hundred thousand?
If.
Or would it?
So so if i- i- if we, if you. If you took out the Mill Creek Park Playground project in total.
Does the one eighty-four go down to a negative sixty thousand, sixty-five thousand? We're sixty-five thousand ahead of budget or you call it six hundred and fifty that would come out?
Can't remember how I calculated that. I I I I I wanna say I calculated it by completely er eliminating the 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 project. So you 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 lose the two hundred, you you lose the six fifty and you lose the four hundred thousand.
So the the six fifty number, really two fifty as far as the budget will cost.
Correct.
The net.
Correct.
A net spend of two fifty, right?
Correct.
It is, is it only for? The portion of the park between the library and the fire station?
Uh I I I I believe it is for the playground.
Right.
So we specifically wrote it for the playground?
Correct.
Okay.
Like, are 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 you thinking about like the the D A ramp or?
I was thinking about bathrooms. I was thinking about. Trailhead, I was thinking, I mean, the park is a bigger place than just the playground.
Yeah, no, it's it, I I I I don't think we could, we could like transition into like trailhead. Or. Or or bathroom, it was it was pretty specific to to playground.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know we gave him a map.
Yep.
Well, the the D the D D A. Showed a very active. Interest in. The bathrooms downtown and the bathrooms at the trailhead. And I think those two projects are projects that. They will. Allocate some type of funding towards if we can figure out when which fiscal years those will hit. So if 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 the council is. Okay with that. I will work with Justin and Michelle to program the their next budget packet. With money in those two items.
So uh the the there is a a hundred thousand in fiscal year twenty five, twenty six for bathrooms. For or for 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 work towards bathrooms at eighty fifty maybe.
Yeah, I know, I know. But we don't know, but the the my point is, we don't know the cost of that, though. We just, you just throw a hundred thousand.
Correct.
What I'm what I'm getting at is that maybe the D D A would pick that cost up, whatever that would be.
Total, total cost?
I don't, I don't, we don't, we don't even know what the total cost is.
Right.
The the my my view of that project is we should hire. Somebody who can. Program it, that's probably an architect or an architect and an engineer, whatever.
So so I I I I did meet with with O H M and uh their their engineer or their um architect. On site and their architecture side is supposed to get me a a proposal.
So cost number one is gonna be hiring the architect for some amount of money. Cost number two is gonna then be, well, then what they will do is say, okay. Men's, women's and. You know. You know, and and here's here's your projected cost, then we'll know what the cost of building it out or modifying it is. Which would be probably the next fiscal year.
Yeah, um I just wanted to say with the with the public restroom, something that we talked about the building was also. Basically a welcome center that includes. Public bathrooms. I think it it is actually important to to recognize that portion. It's something that A C H has talked about. It's something that the historical society has been also supportive of. And um. I think it is important because it it allows us to stop not just for bathrooms, but for people when they come to our city for. What they could see. I I know there's excitement from the museum in in putting artifacts there or. Information of the city and it could be somewhere that we can have some of our information um there as well, so.
I use, I use the term generally that building, so I'm I'm with you on the welcome center.
Also saying that because if public read our documents. It would be nice to.
Yeah, and and when when I met with that, when I met with the uh O H M and their architect, um we we did say, be you know, generally speaking. Probably back half of the buil- building bathrooms, front half um open space. Essentially for welcome center. I I I I know, I I know A C H has talked about uh displaying art in there.
It's a good opportunity.
I I I think there's there's a lot of, there's a lot of people trying to program that space for us.
Is that gonna go on the second story?
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're 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 gonna dig out the basement and uh.
Well, wait, what I was, what I was trying to generally say here introduces that. At the last, the last few D D A meetings, but specifically the last one, the D D A talked about projects. That they could assign money to. If I'm remembering correctly, they have approximately three hundred thousand dollars. In undesignedated. Might be three ten or three oh six or some weird number like that, in undesignedated dollars. It would come in from what next year's revenues. And. Frankly, they don't understand the fire station. Okay, that's not meant to be derogatory, but they they don't know when we say they could pay money towards helping us at the fire station. They don't know what they're spending it on. And any board that approves money. Needs to be able to say, we bought that. And that's why staplers pass quickly and. You know. It it, they we we haven't described it well to them. And that's partially my fault, because it we we've got, you know, we know that we have a. Couple million dollar budget deficit, you know, and then we say, well, it's a couple million, but it could be eight hun- it could be a one point two million if we don't use the contingencies. So, okay, now we're forty percent better than we were, you know, the first number that's out there. And then we say, well, we're using street funds to do Alpine. Big round number, five hundred thousand, which is probably not five hundred thousand, but it's it's your best guess at it. You know what I mean? It's, we don't describe what they're paying for. And so so. But we have more things that they could spend money on. Between. The bathrooms, the trailhead. A contract to help with police or fire services. Now that has to be in our, that has to be put into our strategic plan as an eligible activity, but. I guess what I'm asking is it's all general fund money. No matter how you, no matter how you categorize it on paper, it's all coming from the same pot. At the end of the day, it would help against this, what we're looking at today. So. I guess I'm looking for some kind of direction from the board. If we were to program and ask them to to take the lead on funding the welcome center slash bathrooms. Or any work we do with the trailhead, do those sound like good ideas to steer the dollars? Joe.
I agree with you from the standpoint of, I mean, it's taking money out of one pocket, but another pocket, it's all green. So, I mean, I understand what you're saying. If the fire station doesn't make sense for whatever reason. I I think we're very, very long overdue as far as lease and fire services. I mean, the D D A makes up a chunk. Of the city and yet. You know, we're still working off funding services for that chunk of the city based on revenue from twenty plus years ago. And I mean, just looking at the D F D budget, you know, obviously significantly larger.
And they're getting it, the the the, what we need to do is modify our strategic plan so that that's an eligible activity. And we 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 won't have that. We won't have that strategic plan. Well, we're targeting to have it done by the end of the fiscal year. But a lot's gotta happen in two months to do that, given there's only two board meetings. With the D D A. So so I I, what I'm thinking is that we would show that as a future. Expenditure in this, the the next fiscal year, not in the current one, and not the one we're going into, but you know what I mean? We'd get them thinking that down the road, that's their next.
I I I know Michelle had her had her hand up.
Okay. Yeah, um. Just that, I was gonna say that that I think you've summed it up very well, Sean. The D D A does want to help out. Um they do seem to be more comfortable with it being project related. Um but that doesn't mean that they have shut the door on um uh police or fire services. Looking at it as a long-term need as opposed to an immediate, short-term need, um which is where the projects fall in. I'm sorry?
No, somebody just coughed.
Oh, sorry, um uh the D D A did um support staff um. Applying for a SEMCOG uh planning assistance grant for the trailhead. I don't know that the amount of money we would get for that study would be enough to include the welcome center. But Ann Arbor Spark does have a pot, a small pot of funding left. For projects um where plans need to be um um prepared. Sites need to be studied, et cetera. And the welcome center may fall under that and I can follow up with uh Phil Sontar on Monday regarding that, so. If we could get those little. Parts covered by grants, that's one less cost for both the city and the D D A.
I've I've hinted to Michelle not to wait to apply for any of those. If it's, if it's a twenty percent match or it's a fifty percent match, it's still. Money on it. Would benefit us, so from a time perspective. I've just encouraged her to do that, understanding that we would, if we get the grant, we'd likely commit the the match, whatever it would be. Does that make sense to everybody here?
We 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 probably do have to have an understanding what what the. Uh the the potential cost.
Yeah, absolutely. Not saying, I'm just saying that that I don't wanna get stuck trying to figure it out, but let's apply, you know.
The trailhead you're talking about is at Green and Broad, right?
Yes.
I think it'd be a wonderful idea if the D D A could help us with both or or one of them. Um my other question is, does the D D A currently pay anything for fire services and the fire or and the police?
No.
So they collect all them taxes downtown and they don't help with our monthly or quarterly payments at all?
But that's because of the technicality, right? It's not.
It's not in the plan.
Right.
It's not what?
It it's not in their strategic plan.
Okay.
Which which like, I think things things mu- must be in the strategic plan for that.
Which which is good, right? Because now we modify that and allow that too.
Yeah.
I, okay, thank you.
And yeah, the part of it is that they. The our most historic buildings fall within that area, so one of the reasons we wanted fire to be. Where it is, is the closeness to to that area. So I I I am also in support of updating the the strategic plan.
Absolutely.
Do any other cities D D A contribute to the? Fire and safety or gen- or?
I I believe it's fairly common.
Is it?
Yeah, I I. Michelle's delicately described this to us in different memos. There's a lot of words in the D D A Act, depending on which attorney you are and how you're interpreting it. You can, I I personally think you could read things differently, but to to play nice in the same sandbox, the easiest way to do this. Is to make sure that it says the goal of the D D A is to help support public safety. In our strategic plan, and if we if we simply just put it in there. Once we adopt that, which let's say we adopt it in June. They could then allocate money as a line item on the budget for that.
So it has to be specifically. Notated or in the contract or whatever you want to.
Yeah, I I I think that the D, I think the D D A Act allows for the D D A to enter into contracts. That help. Meet its mission. The question is, does the strategic plan outline public safety as a mission? Even though intuitively to me, it seems like D D As are set up to create safe downtowns. Okay, and 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 the interpretation from our attorney has missed the intuitive part of the of the. But but again, to play nice in the same sandbox, the 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 surefire, I think the surefire way to do it. Is we put that as a goal in our strategic plan. And then we have the city. Create some kind of. Agreement with the D D A or the D D A agrees to reimburse the city for public safety. We're again, we're generalizing here. This. Justin may take us through a couple extra steps. Or whatever, but that's that's the framework under which then the line item that the D D A could have in their budget.
Right.
Would send money back. For example, they pay for downtown public maintenance.
Right.
Okay, they pay a hundred and thirty-three thousand for public maintenance. It'd be done the same way.
Is there any pending litigation here or where?
And the D D A, the thing, the D D A is gonna be flush with money.
Oh, I know. That was always the intent.
Okay, i- I mean, it it's. It's huge. And their their debt is starting to, we're getting to the end of a window. I mean. Our whole town is in the year twenty thirty-two is gonna have so much money. We're not gonna know what to do with because I all the, all the bonds we paid for except for City Hall.
Well.
It's just gonna be rolling, rolling down the stairs.
Everybody gets free money, come on back.
What you meant by printing money?
Yeah, I mean, that that room that nobody uses up here is gonna have a printed press, it's gonna.
So you're unaware of any pending litigation regarding this setup as a D D A giving money for public service through the government?
I I I.
I don't know how that act is.
I think there are communities locally that we could check that have D D As to see how they do it. I believe the city of Everett does it.
I mean, if it's accepted, it's legal.
I kind of will step up for D D A for a second here and I'll use Ray's approach that he earlier said. I mean, they have the same thing. I'm only interested in paying the bills that I have to pay and, you know, and worry about incomes that are coming in, right? I mean, uh from there and it's like, come on, guy, you never asked me to contribute, so what's, you know? Now that you do, cool, but.
Well, there's, there's. There's ongoing costs. Right, which are year over year, over year, over year, and fire services and police services are ongoing year over year, over year, over year. And they're not gonna go down.
Right.
They're always gonna do this. So if if the D D A. From from a structural perspective of our budget. If if we could work with them and agree that they're paying some percentage, some component. That structurally helps us plan beyond one year. The.
General budget out huge.
It helps it, it helps it, right, allow, but it allows us to look longer than just one year. Um, the the short-term stuff. You know, what I call projects. You know, when we decide to do the bathroom. It'll be, it'll span one year fiscal year or two fiscal years, you'll you'll plan it in one and construct in the other, or maybe you're lucky, if we're lucky, we'll do it all in one fiscal year. It'll work out, but chances are it's probably two, the way things go.
But the 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 then DDA can help with with servicing those bathrooms.
Right, after they're there, right.
After they're there, but.
Right. The same with the trailhead, the trailheads, you know, probably could be three fiscal years down the road. Depending on when the pathway is, it's done. You know, so we need to, we need to lay those costs out and show the vision of how that that structure works for them and us. And that's what we're trying to do.
Fantastic, I mean, plus more cooperation between DDA and the council, which only. Hopefully leads to more productive relationship, so.
There are good, there are good borders, a lot of good people on that.
Well, they they've had it rough for a number of years because they have not had the money. You know, for a lot of years, so it's nice to to know that they're doing well now, so they can, uh. Help us.
See, you're one of the few people that knows that, you know?
One, one of the um, one of the other things DDA did at the last meeting, um, we've been setting aside a hundred thousand dollars. For the last three or four fiscal years with the idea that it would, when when one of the bonds became callable, that we could pay down debt. And at our last meeting, we opted to take two hundred and five thousand of the dollars that were there. And eliminate. The last fiscal, the last year of one of the bonds payments. Um, which would save interest. Over the next four years also, so. Um.
Ooh, fiscal responsibility.
Well, Randy, Randy Willis gets the game ball for that idea, he um. His goal is to try and, you know, pay off all the debt that.
Right.
That he's voted on, I think. That's a bad one.
Think Michelle wanted to say something?
Go ahead, Michelle, sorry, thanks, thanks.
Oh, thank you, um, I was just going to follow up, um. Um, yes, in, as the DDA or as um. The years continue to move forward, the DDA will have more money, um, I think the the term flush with cash. Was appropriate, um, but we have to remember, it's also because they've made wise investments into projects. Um, that improved the district, which ultimately improves the city. And that was their charge when they were established. Um, they won't be able to just sit on that cash. They will have to have um identified as part of their development and TIF plan. And their strategic plan, um, how they're gonna spend that money, cuz they can't just collect it. Um, for the, for the, um, just to collect it. And they also can't collect it just to um, pay for services and it's a balancing act. Um, so I think as long as we all keep in mind, um, you know, this is it, this isn't. We do things in a short term, but there's also long-term. Um, goals that we're trying to uh, achieve, I think we will all get where we wanna be. But I I like the idea of the fact that we work together, both DDA and city.
Um, how important is it to council, I know we're not on the street fund, but how important is it to council that the DDA contributes to the Main Street resurfacing or downtown? Project that we approved in January for. The bridge to Baker. Philosophically, I mean.
About the one with the county?
Well, we we've, we've blended it, it could, it. I mean, we've, we've.
Because of the crossings, but you mean just resurfacing Main Street period?
Any, anything, I. Infrastructure is one clear thing that is in the act and our plan that says we can spend money on. And I mean, Main Street is clearly within the DDA right there.
Right, I agree.
I mean, actually, all the crosswalks that in ADA, it's stuff that we are gonna be upgrading was originally put in by the DDA.
Yeah.
I mean, to 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 me, to me, that's very logical place for them to spend money. But it doesn't affect it, it doesn't affect our general fund.
Is that going to take away from a bathroom or a trailhead? I mean, is there a trade-off for this or?
Dan, I I I was, I personally think that that they should do a hundred thousand towards the bathroom, a hundred thousand towards the trailhead and a hundred thousand towards. Main Street. With their three hundred thousand dollars this year. That would be how I would do it.
Also, so, um.
And then, and then they'd be, cuz I don't think, I don't think. I think a hundred thousand dollars will go a long way for the bathroom downtown in figuring out what we need. It certainly hires the architect. And certainly programs what the eventual, we don't even know what that cost is gonna be, right?
Right.
I also think a hundred thousand dollars would go a long way towards programming a trailhead.
So the the, um. So so so, okay, 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 council did already improve the the, um, uh. Engineering design, um, so and so for 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 Main Street, so O H M is is proceeding on that. The actual. Construction cost, infrastructure cost. The bulk of that is likely to fall in 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 the following fiscal year in twenty. Twenty-six, twenty-seven. Cuz it'll, it'll, it'll be in like July, August of twenty-six.
But they could, they could, I mean, they could cover the design.
They 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 could also cover the design.
I mean, you could, you could shape it however you wanna shape it.
Wouldn't it be easier for them just to focus on one project? And say that we did this project, I don't know how much that all it's gonna cost for downtown, that's.
You can tell me.
That that's actually theirs, you know?
I was just trying to think of the other, the other thing, the thing, there were, there were five things that I think we talked to them about. The downtown bathrooms, the trailhead, fire services, which we already said, you know, is a future thing. The fire station, which they don't really understand.
Right.
And then main, the Main Street infrastructure project.
And Alpine Street would also fall under their jurisdictions too, Main Street and Alpine.
Yep.
And um, the 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 there we have a a, I think it's not. Twenty-six, I think it may be twenty-seven where we where we talked about um, redoing the alley. Um, behind Huntington and the bakery.
Yeah, I actually got a question, same infrastructure, water, sewers, stuff like that too.
Yep.
Sewer behind there, they need to be lined. And that's kind of what we're talking about, once they do that, it'll be perked out too. Um, plus the manhole is drop manhole and the drop is. Pretty much non-existent right now, it's gonna have effects. Um, we talked to Marcus about trying to get the price together, my, my costs. And then to figure that out, but.
All of those infrastructure things, Tim, within the DDA are things the DDA should can pay for. If we need a pump station for the bathroom, any of that stuff.
Right.
It's all eligible.
When they redone Main Street, the DDA, they did redid everything, basically, water main service lines, yeah, sewers, yeah.
Yeah, bricks, landscaping, islands.
I I didn't know where's, um, I do like the idea of the distribution of. You know, certain money towards projects, but what benefit, one benefit of if. They take one whole project is that the management of it is with them and not with our staff.
Right.
Um, so that could be helpful in the process as well.
Yeah, it's 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 really us still, though, and Michelle's their executive director, so it's still us.
Okay.
We want to be involved.
Yeah, well, I I thought that was like, at least it would. We still would be involved, but. Maybe a little bit less, but.
I think we wanna be in charge of it.
Fair. Fair.
And it's kind of hard because the DDA, when they did the downtown, they hired Beckett and Raider to do that, and then it was. Beckett and Raider and O H M and the city and sometimes it made it difficult. I'm sure that they're doing much better job at it this time, but it just seems like. When the city has control, um.
Well, it's all about.
We're gonna help them pay, we'll, we'll, we'll pay some too.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
To me, it's all the total cost of ownership, so if the total cost of ownership means more headaches for us, if we are not fully involved, then. Fair.
I think you should ask them to do the hundred, hundred, hundred. That way, they can see. How their money is being utilized and they can make a decision and it gives them the impression that here. Um, allowing them to choose what they think is best for their future. At the same time, we analyze. And say. Alright, because of the contribution, we were able to cross this right off our list, thank you very much. Or because of this, we were able to do this, or because of this. You know, and then hopefully in the upcoming flush years. There'll be already channels directing that to finish off. I'm almost like a CIP.
Well, there are, there are some potentially expensive initiatives out there, you know, thirty, forty-five broad.
Mm-hmm.
Could require dollars at some point. Um, if you wanna bury overhead electric lines, that's not cheap. There's, there's all sorts of places where. The money can go, Grand Street needs to be reconstructed, uh. You know, there's, there's a lot of roads in the DDA district that could receive attention.
Did they have any recommendations?
I joke about the flush, well. Ray, right now, they have a healthy fund balance in terms of, there's gonna be some money to spend. The DDA went like seven, eight, nine years where we haven't spent, we haven't done anything, because we've just been paying the, paying the bonds. And and starting to get up, but with with Grandview, Grandview has really helped. You know, that, that's really helped and 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 it's. Two buildings from being built out and. You know. They're on, they're on good paths, I'm getting there, they're on a good path.
But your list that you just named off is a lot more money than the DDA will probably ever have right away, you know? Right, they can have a lot of things to look at in the next fifteen, twenty.
Yeah.
It's gonna take a lot of money.
What's projections?
What's that?
What product, what are they looking at? What project are they considering, other than, you know? What we've. Uh, offered. Grand Street, I imagine.
They would like to figure, that what they would like to do is figure out what to do with thirty, forty-five broad.
Well, I can understand that.
But we, we. Two months ago, or maybe it was February, which, which month didn't we meet, when we didn't have an official meeting, I think in February? Maybe it was.
I think, um.
Was it March?
I think it was March. Yeah, March, last month.
So and so then in February. Oh, we voted not to sell the property or not to continue discussions with.
Trowbridge.
Trowbridge. Um. There's, there's still, there's not a unified. Direction there. We gotta get back to that once we get through the budget.
By direction, you mean?
Well, so, you know, we bought property, the last fiscal year, we we bought property right at next to the gravel parking lot.
Right.
The idea was that the gravel parking lot was sort of a odd-shaped, narrow parcel that with the additional property. Would be a nice development project. If you just, and again, that's across the street from thirty, forty-five broad.
Right.
If you just look at that, I think it's primed. To sell and have somebody develop it. Okay? But, there's always, there's always a but, we we love to tie stuff. But that doesn't address thirty, forty-five broad, and there's, there's some school thought that. Somehow we need to do it all together so that it's. It's eligible for potential either DDA contributions or TIF capture. Um. I'm not convinced that the community wants. Buildings on thirty, forty-five broad.
Don't seem like it.
Um. If you, if you've driven by there lately, you'll see the big metal poles. The DT is gonna put in, they're gonna take down a bunch of the wooden poles across there. And put in a more robust overhead system there. Yeah, I've been suggesting that we split the property into two halves. Um.
Move the street?
Nope, no, no, split it by the the power lines.
Oh, okay.
One half of the, one side of the power line, one other side of the power line. Uh. Which, which, you know, now you sort of have three pods, right? You have the the pod across.
Right.
You have one, and then if the power lines are here, you have the other one, right? The park is here.
Yeah, it seems like three would be, uh.
We 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 can't, we can't agree to, we have, we we haven't decreed yet on what to do, but.
Well, it's three easier to sell than one.
I personally would be happy if we just got one developed. Start, you know, that's, I think we've, we've, we're trying to bite off more than we can do, is what I think, but.
Does a developer have to purchase the entire ladder? He can't just buy thirds of it, or is it?
People that would like to sell it all as one and some people.
Wanna split it?
Yeah.
Where's the revenue, which is makes me the most revenue?
It's not right now. And if that ground wasn't contaminated, it'd be over.
Well, and the revenue thing is the funny part, it's like, it's almost like, get something built, because we talked about this with the. Forever ago, you know, the taxes that we would have gotten on the Schultz building for all the time it took to delay would have paid for. The downstairs that we were gonna buy and have be City Hall and Council Chambers. I mean, literally, we lost that much in taxes and stuff. I mean, boggles the mind to think how much, how much the DDA would have in far, as far as funding goes. Had that been developed ten years ago when we purchased it. I mean, it's just, it's just stunning how much lost. You know? Money there is.
Just look at what, just look at what one fifty Jeffers done.
Yeah.
I never looked at it in in that perspective, you know?
Oh, it's a machine. It's gotta be.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, Michelle, should you put it up again?
Um, so if we could get back um, to the different pods that you um, outlined, Sean. The bathroom or the hundred thousand for the bathroom and the hundred thousand for trailhead, those are general fund. Um, those would be more associated with city council's general fund, correct? That would help, by the DDA participating or taking those over, that relieves pressure on your general fund. The hundred thousand dollars on Main Street, um, that's out of your road fund. Um, i- is that, is there a need there for that, um, in the short term?
I think so, I can do more on that road.
There are a lot of road projects, I mean, I, I mean, I'm guessing based on the proposal for the option three to decrease the road mileage slightly. We're, we have enough funding to get through the project based on that.
We, I I I I believe so, the the the. There's a lot more ongoing costs in general fund than there are in the roads fund, so the 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 roads fund is almost exclusively project based.
Yeah.
And we can, we can gas or throttle the roads fund a little bit more than we can the general fund.
Can the road fund support? Part of the um, work we need to do on Alpine for the fire station?
It it already is.
It already is, so.
Well, yeah, we 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 already, we already have five hundred thousand.
So then that hundred can, in that pile can also basically help with.
Mm-hmm.
With the replenishing that fund.
Yeah, good point, again, it's all coming out of one pocket or the other, but it's all the same.
I I just, I just thought that since we're shifting some street fund dollars to general.
Mm-hmm.
The hundred thousand dollars from the DDA. It's essentially doing the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I I, yeah, I mean.
Anyway, those are round numbers. It'll, it'll, it'll never pass hundred, hundred, hundred. There's, it'll, it'll be a different set of numbers when, when you get the other input, they'll need. Like, like, the logical question is, well, what do we need to spend on the architect? So you need to get the proposal.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and that might, you know, if if that comes back and it's, you know, fifty thousand dollars. Well, they should cover the fifty, and then you might say, well, what's the other fifty going for?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe they don't need to have more than fifty in the first approval, right? My point is, I think, I think they have three hundred thousand that they could allocate.
Mm-hmm.
On the, on the DDA, the. I could see where there would want, there would be a desire to do the projects, you know, like the things we've been talking about versus. Um. Things that are less visible, like redoing part of the road or like the. Things that are less visible, like redoing part of the road or like the services and stuff. But has there been any discussion about how that might break down? Like they might allocate a certain amount to. Ongoing things versus projects or anything like that, or have they not gone into that much detail on the discussion?
Um. Joe, the one ongoing thing. The two ongoing things in the DDA budget are. Downtown DPW maintenance. They do a hundred and thirty-three thousand or something like that. Something around there. And then they pay for. I believe they pay for Michelle a little bit, don't they pay? And, and Maria's treasure. So those are ongoing, just like our water fund pays us back in the general fund and our street fund. The DDA has those, those mechanisms built in. Um, the, the reality is we're not spending as much money on attorney fees in the DDA as we did for a while when we were. Doing the wellness center challenge. Um. You know, if, if we can get the strategic plan, the strategic plan is a good project right now. We need to get that finished because once that's finished, then it opens up different line items to, to put dollars in. That's the answer to your question?
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, and, 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 and another, another minor.
Is your hand still up?
Nope, I took it down. Sorry.
Maybe, maybe one thing we could do, um. Can we share the DDA budget? After you draft, after you get it like. Crafted, so the council could see it. I know that the DDA chair Doug is supportive of. Of the ongoing long-term helping with the public safety. I know he's supportive of that. He hasn't been at the last couple of meetings. What's funny is what we, Don Darnell used to be our. Vice chair. So now when Doug doesn't show up for the meetings, I get to run the meetings.
Perfect.
Yeah, perfect, right, perfect, perfect.
Overruled. I just think it's nice that, uh. It's very helpful that DD, the DDA is up on their feet and, and doing better because this is just gonna help our whole community. As a whole. That's, that's nice.
Correct.
And they, and they've gotta like it too. I mean, so other than all them years had to be very, very difficult.
I'm sure that property hanging over their heads is irking with no end.
Yeah.
Um, just as an aside, on Wednesday, uh, with the great weather that we had here. I walked, um, around the park and over by where the future Trailhead is. And Wednesday is also the run club at erratic ale night that they do. But I counted the cars. In the trailhead area. Along Grand Street. In the two gravel parking lots.
Yeah.
In the, on the shoulder across from.
Right.
From the two gravel parking lots and the asphalt pavement that we allow people to park on. There were a hundred and thirty-five cars. And I might have missed a couple, but I mean, a hundred and thirty-five.
And these are runners?
These are all people that were, were taking, no, they're, they're, they're either running or they're on the trail, you know, using the trail. It was jammed.
Runners should have carpool. And they all drive their bikes out.
They weren't all runners. Maybe it ran there.
Well, the, the, the thing, the thing is.
That's a lot of people. On a Wednesday.
No one was.
Hundred day. Ray, it's, it's, it's unbelievable. I, I mean, you, you know, and, and, and it's. It's funny, you could say, well, you, you, it's not safe because we don't have a sidewalk along Broad.
Yeah.
Uh, you could say that the parking lots are gravel and they, you know, they, they're not. New, but they, people park cars all over the place.
People go where they wanna go. I don't care.
You know, anytime you design a parking lot, you're gonna lose spaces versus the gravel parking lot. It's very efficient, right?
They're gonna just pull up on a shoulder. They don't care. They're leaving.
But the, the, the energy that, that that one event coupled with some good weather draws, it's a lot of people.
Well, to add to that a little bit, Sean, I. We've all been here a lot of times. I've been here my whole life and me and Ellen, my wife were up at, uh. Auburn's the other day and I looked at my wife and I said, who would have thought? That downtown Dexter. Seven days a week has got people everywhere. I mean, when I was a kid, we had a stoplight at Maine and Broad.
Yeah. A one blinking.
Do you know what I mean? Honestly, and there was nothing going on. You try to, yeah.
It's, it is incredible to me to see all the activity and it's seven days a week, including what you ever said. I mean, it's crazy. It's nice.
Sean, if I could.
Feel like this overnight. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Years and years and years of recognizing where we're dressing at and then. So I'm moving on.
Michelle, go ahead.
So if I could real quickly, just piggyback off your comment, Sean, about the hundred and thirty-five vehicles that you counted. Um, it was one of the very first, um, beautiful days midweek. That people could come out and, and utilize the trail and patron the visitor, the businesses, et cetera. What I think is interesting is if you look back at the parking study that was done. As part of the master plan update back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, we all know that. Um, the quantity of parking spaces is eight hundred plus within a five-minute walk of Maine and Broad. Those parking spaces didn't include the two gravel lots. That were created when one fifty Jeffords was done. It doesn't include the little gravel area across from erratic ales. It doesn't include any on-street parking on Grand Street. Um, so when you think about those hundred and thirty-five cars that Sean just mentioned. I would venture to guess that about, um, a hundred of those. Could be added to the eight hundred plus within that five-minute walk. We've got lots of parking, um. It's just a matter of, of now. Getting that information out to people and recognizing that Broad and Forest, Broad and Grand. Have become this really, um, nice commercial node to be, um, um. Built upon or to expand.
That's awesome.
And you also got the eye cord to you.
Hey, let, let me, let me, um, ask, um, Justin, can you help me do an exercise here?
Alright.
I'm staring at page nine. Staring at page nine of the packet, which is the little. Graph that you have there for general fund balance by year. And I wanna just. Test the. What I'm looking at there. So. You're projecting with the, with the two hundred and two thousand. Four hundred or whatever that. You think we're gonna. Add to fund balance at the end of this year because of largely because of the delay of some projects.
Mm hmm.
We're gonna be at four point two nine zero. Is that my understanding of that?
Right.
Okay, so.
Of course, Mary can drop away.
No, it's all good. She, we have to, we have to learn to get along.
Yeah.
And today we're practicing. I, I waited till she left. Okay.
Oh, no.
I'm joking, I'm joking.
Okay, 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 because the, the, I, 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 I think I know where you're going. And then there's gonna be a portion of this that is restricted.
No, that's not where I'm going to say.
Okay, 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 okay.
Well, that's a later question, but you're.
Okay.
Um. Your assumption of that it's gonna drop from four point two nine down to one one five.
Mm hmm.
Assumes. That we use all the contingency on the fire station project. Is that correct?
I believe so.
I believe so also. So that, and that amount. That amount. On the fire station project. Is. You know, I go low. What's that number? It's, it's like three ninety, three eighty-four plus. Three twenty-five, right? It's like seven hundred and nine thousand?
Mm hmm.
Okay, so, so potentially. And we haven't chewed into the seven hundred and nine yet, right?
Yeah, we're, 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 we, 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 we are still operating off of bond dollars.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
So there, so there, there's potentially seven hundred and nine thousand. There that could go back. Into, into the reserve, right?
If, 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 if we use no contingency.
Right, if we use no contingency. Okay, this, this, and the other variable that could help replenish that is the sale of the.
Mav.
Mav property, right?
Yep, correct.
Which if we could get what we sold it for, the round figure five hundred thousand dollars. I guess my point is. There's not a lot that has to happen. For that number to double from one point one to two and a half.
Correct. The, the, this, the, 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 this is.
This is worst case there. That's worst case.
Clo- 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 close to worst case.
Without selling Mav.
Correct. And wi- 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 without local community stabilization.
And without, and, and without local community stabilization, which could be upwards of, what'd you say, three hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's what we've gotten with, with, with our, our previous.
So there's, there's a million and a half in play.
Mm hmm.
There. We just need to be mindful of that and manage, that, manage to that.
Yeah, and, 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 and that's why I wanted to call those items out specific, well, not, not the, not the contingency, but. Why, why specifically wanted to call out the fact that Mav wasn't factored in, local community stabilization wasn't factored in. Uh. Yeah, so, so that, 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 that number could look a lot better.
Well, I mentioned, I mentioned at the bill saying that one of my. One of my challenges to you is to figure out how to replenish the reserves somewhere.
Mm hmm.
Um. You've got three big. Cards to play when you need to play them. You know, I'd hold on to that contingency money as long as you possibly can with the fire station.
Mm hmm.
Uh. You know, and, and you're doing. Anyway.
I, 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 I've tried, tried to be very, very protective.
This is bleak if you just stare at it. Bleak, but there's, there's opportunity there for it to still be very healthy is what I'm trying to say.
Mm hmm.
Well, there's a lot of expenses here. Numbers are flying around, you know?
And, and, and if the DDA picks up a hundred thousand on something on the. All those affect that number.
Mm hmm. Correct.
Well, and I would think too that, um. Not to work out of the woods with the contingency on the fire department, but getting. The malls up, getting the dirt in there, getting, I mean, there was a lot of unknowns.
There was.
Right there, a lot.
Sure looks pretty today.
But I would hope that's really gonna help us with this project that was, as we go along.
Mm hmm.
Yep. We just gotta be not spending money on stuff we don't. We necessarily need. Because a lot of times contingency can go to things like, oh, I forgot about this.
Right, it sure would be nice to have that. Well, one thing that we're gonna have to get our hands around is the, um.
The, the soft costs.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, yeah. So I mean, to think things like. Appliances, uh, furniture. All that stuff.
IKEA, here we come. Sounds like a container of it.
Facebook, I mean, this is what Facebook Marketplace is for, right?
There was somewhere that I saw.
I can't even work email, man. And, and, and Jenna picked up, uh, what, like a two hundred and fifty dollar desk for like twenty bucks?
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Sure it's fine. Two boat crates and a board. And Justin, what's the Knights of Columbus? I see we're staging in there with our big trucks.
Uh, in, 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 in Knights of Columbus?
Or yes, with the dirt that they're bringing in, they're, they're ending up down there, in and out of there.
Oh.
Or you talk about fire. Yeah. Yeah, they, they talk to them. Oh, have they? Because I'm hoping they came in there and put all brand new gravel down. So for this, I'm hoping we're gonna go back and make that right. No, they're going to make that. Well, that's what I mean. Somebody, okay. They usually say we're using ours on the broad string for a little bit. And then once they were able to do with their room, they're over there. It's almost they talked to them and it was, once it's done, it'll all recreate.
Well, one thing that might be nice too is maybe a little dust control there because. I mean, it looks like something's on fire when they're in and out of there. That's how much dust they're.
Oh, how much longer they get?
And the potholes they're putting in there, they need to, they need to take care of that.
Well, so, so, um, they're, they're supposed to be, um, moving on to, um, footings and, um. The, the slab in early to mid-May.
Yeah, when I went by this morning. It was all flat all the way up to the blocks. It was like a flat building site.
Mm hmm.
I didn't even recognize it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's wild. It's, it's come a long way.
It looked, the interior site was cleaned up. Yeah, man.
It's gonna get good now.
Mm hmm.
It's gonna start looking like something. I mean, it already has with the remaining walls, but it'd be nice to. See some structure go up.
Absolutely. Um, good, good, sorry, sorry, go, going back to the, the changes in the milage rates. Is everyone okay with that concept as, as was presented?
Was there a total of that?
The, 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 the goal was to, to keep the to- total the same. So. Um, the geo bond is able to be lowered because of, uh, value increase and the contribution to the geo fund. From local community stabilization. So, uh, a part of what was going to our local community stabilization in the general fund. Was changed by the state to go to, uh, the geo bond, fund. Um, and so that military is gonna, is gonna go from like one point six six down to one point four three or something like that.
How much?
And so, and, and sorry, and to, to, to finish that thought, and so, um. The way I, I presented is that the general fund will increase to, to recapture that.
Okay.
And then bring the roads mileage down a little bit and. General fund ca- captures that. So that way the, the total stays the same.
Right.
For two, in tw- uh, twenty-five, twenty-six as it was in twenty-four, twenty-five.
Have you? Have you looked at? The possibility of what a miller will bring in cash-wise versus our. Current financial position? Is it worth it?
Yeah, so I have that presented.
And, and option three is the same as scenario three?
Correct. Yep, yeah. Uh, that is page. Uh, twenty-three of thirty-three. So the value of a mill is roughly two hundred and eighty-three thousand. Um, and so the, the. Uh, difference in general fund from, uh. This year, twenty-five, twenty-six, from what is current is. Two. Uh, about point four of a mill. So, two hundred and eighty-three thousand. Times point four is about a hundred and thirteen thousand.
So. Seven mills is what we pay annually to DAFD?
Uh, so.
Let's just go with one point five for your next feature.
Yeah, so.
Can we say two some? Two third, two seventy, two sixty?
To two eighty-three.
Yeah, so twenty-eight by one point five is. Seven, eight?
Yeah, so, so if we call it one point four million. Divided by two eighty-three. Is a, a, about five mills. Round, round numbers.
I, I just needed to know what that was.
So essentially the state's decided that they should help communities with debt. That's why the shift to the communities. The dollars.
I'm not sure why they made that change because my understanding was always that any new millages would not be reimbursed. Through the local community stabilization and this is a new village. Um, but when I called up, they're like, oh yeah, that's right. And then you gotta put it towards the debt. And I'm like, oh, okay.
Hmm, geez, we didn't own that, we'd ask for ten million.
Yeah, sure, really poor, man.
Well, what, 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 what we're saying is our residents aren't gonna have to pay as much back.
Mm hmm.
Yeah. That's the net of. I don't know. I was gonna argue with the miller, option four would be we max out the top rated funds.
Okay.
Um, the, the, so, so, sorry, sorry, the, 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 the future finance director will, will, will love you for that.
Uh, yeah. Worry about that.
So I wanted to, uh, purpose of. My, what I'm gonna talk about is to plant the seed here. So I wanted to talk about, um, like public safety. Milage as a standalone voted on, on top of general fund, live its own life. Milage, um. And the reason why is, um. Actually goes back to Michelle's, uh, comments about the parking lot spaces that we have available, which we have a lot available in town. But, um. Previous to your comment. The most inefficient way is to have a paved pavement that has nice little lines that people like to go in there and put their cars. Equally spaced apart, gives things organized. We really love those. Um, actually, uh, um. DDA meeting when it was held at the library, people were talking about not actually having enough parking spots, which is not true. We know that there are enough parking spots. But it's feeling that there is not enough parking spots because. I have a nice little driveway. I have a nice little driveway, one spot here, one spot there, gonna go to campus, I'm gonna park in a dedicated parking. Everything is siloed, everything is nicely organized, this is the area that goes to makes things. More comfortable for a human being to enjoy, right, because it's nicely silent. Like, this conversation, even the comment that I told you to hold on to. Is we're shuffling money from here to there, we're talking to DDA, hey, let's kind of like. This is the situation, this is a fair solution, let's talk about it, which is, which makes sense, right, more people together, but that point. It's almost, we need to merge the councils and because we're just so many things have to go hand in hand together. Now. Coming from the military, I really do like things solid and everyone have their own little responsibility, this is what we're gonna do. Doesn't mean that we can't talk together, I feel like the. The public safety millage that even Webster Township has adapted, that will be dedicated to only. Police and fire service, voted on by the people saying this is how much we are willing to pay to receive that service. Right, which is the most. I mean, most straightforward thing, if people say that, yes, this is what I want to pay for it, you're okay. We are comfortable saying that this is how much we're willing to pay for the service, work with this budget or else something else. And then we also don't have to strain and try to figure out the little managing tools of how to figure out. Uh, where money needs to go from year to year on a budget, which a person like you. And, maybe right, like, knows all the ins and outs of the budget and every line item here. Yes, like, you live and breathe that, you completely understand, if I'm just a taxpayer who decided to show up to the meeting and look at this. I'm like, I have no freaking clue what the hell is going on, and because things don't appear simple. We always question things that don't appear simple, if I'm gonna start talking to you about the science that I do and I don't explain it to you properly. As an outsider, you'd be like, I'm, you're making shit up. Right, whi- which could be the furthest thing from the truth, but that's not the perception. So, the seed that I'm planting is, is this something that we should consider, think about as an option for. Styloing this. Budget. For the services as a its own line item thing, so we don't have to. Work so freaking hard to make it work. The, of course, I understand that, you know, there's an argument that could be made that it decreases our flexibility, right, because. Being able to shuffle money as you need it, when you need it, allows you to adapt to situations faster. Right, or unexpected things that you need to address at the moment, right, so you are going to give up that to an extent. Yeah.
So, um. I, 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 I think if it is i- in the model of an authority. I, I think that works. By, 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 by taking the fire service out of the general fund and putting it into. It's, it's own board with its own millage, the board is responsible for th- their own budget, and they have to keep to that budget. That, that works, the, the, the way the funding model is right now is, even if. The voters of the city of Dexter choose to just do a public safety millage and. Um, approve it and we're still a part of the DAFD. Th- the DAFD essentially sets their own budget and we have to pay that no matter what it is. Even if our public safety millage. Doesn't, i- i- isn't enough to cover what the AFD is telling us that we have to pay. And so then it goes back to the general fund to subsidize.
Perfect, that's, uh, that's really kind of what I thought is the case, which. Only reinforces potentially if this type of millage is of interest or. Could be feasible or could be meaningful, it only reinforces the goals and objectives that we have for. Twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget. Saying that this could be. Like an issue that needs to be addressed from multiple angles, including, uh, the budget. And the villages that were set and how organized we are and where things go. Um, but yes, I do very, very much understand that it is tied to the agreement and. How money is allocated there, so in order for the millage, public safety millage play an organized role. The other issue needs to be resolved or addressed for it to work.
Correct.
So. End statement.
Yeah, no, and part of.
That's good.
What you're suggesting, I mean, that's really where the townships are, right, because the townships don't have the ability. To levy the same village that the city does, right, because our charter lets us do.
Eleven point.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's. Bo- 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 yeah, twelve and a half and five, bo- 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 before headly.
Right, um, and they literally are in that situation where if their costs end up being more than what their public safety villages are. They would have to take it from general operating, I mean. I don't say this in a mean way or anything, but it would be nice if they got to be in that position, because they would essentially then be in the same position as us. And then start to have some, you know, financial. They, they would, they would start wanting to financially restrict things, and maybe that's happened in the past, but I just don't know. But, um, you know, they've gone through stuff where they said, well, we get this millage back up, what if it doesn't pass? You know, how are we gonna pay for fire and police and stuff?
Which, which does happen.
Yeah, and the other, the other side of that though is. I don't. Uh, we would have to come up with some way of saying, okay, if we're gonna take five meals out of the.
General fund.
Out of the general fund that was going to fire and.
Right.
A couple of mills that is going to pay for the, for the sheriff, you know, that five or seven or eight mills or whatever that whole number is, you know. We don't have anything in our charter, we just have a, a general operating mill, right? So I mean, right now we're levying that, even if you've gotten the community, the city to vote for it. I mean, the question would be, does that mean that now we can, we could go up to twenty three or twenty five mills or whatever for the city? Because we got this additional, I, I don't know, but it's something that would definitely have to be, you'd have to figure out how to. Are you gonna offset what we're all paying, and is it gonna make any difference? Right, just gonna be, uh, splitting out of the.
Exactly, I mean, and then at the same time, are you keeping the general fund millage the same, I mean, all of a sudden you just took out the money and then you put it. But, so it will sit on, if it's voted on, right, it sits on top of whatever's in the charter, it's extended alone, it's one thing. Um, so then, um. The question is. With the general, with the other millage having decreased, because we're saying, but at the same time now we're saying, hey, whatever we have and we're approaching our limit. Is no longer enough, right, is no longer sustainable. Uh, we've seen those very words, not maybe this packet, but the previous packet. So, at the same time, we are busting that number pretty soon. Um, so a solution of some sort, um, and it's just. One of the things, just adding the financial millage, very well defined, this is what it is, this is where it's gonna go. Public does. Perceive safety as important to every day life, right, I. You know, I may complain about something, but like, I also want fire and police medical to be available. Um, I mean, I will. Complain, but I will vote yes on that, because after, we have families, we have people careful, we want them to be safe. So, doesn't, as you brought up, hundred percent, it does not mean that people will vote.
The point you're talking about, it's very common in some of your older four communities around Detroit where their. People just go back to a point where they cannot sustain their general fund, so they go out and they ask for public safety millage because. People will vote for them. Uh, they won't vote for, had they override to roll the villagers back up, but they'll vote. That's real common in your, your old parks and your river Russians and, you know, those communities.
So. If we do a millage. And it passes, and then two or three years or five years down the road, the, the fire, it comes up again that we need to vote on it, and they vote, we both know. Then we gotta have reserves to cover what we need for the fire department, above, above what. The old millage was, or how does?
Well, I, 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 I mean, by, by, by rolling it into its own board, the, the board has to manage. That budget the way we, we have to manage that.
Right.
The, the way we have to manage our budget, um, and so if, you know, of, uh, no vote happens. Then what's likely to happen is they'll turn around and put ano- another, another ballot proposal forward, maybe with a lower millage, maybe.
But, uh, we, the community is gonna have to make up the difference on what the shortfall is for what they think they need.
According to the interlocal.
You guys are talking about two different things.
It, 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 it depends on the agreement.
Okay.
To, to create the authority.
Yeah, in, in the, in the current, in the current interlocal. When DAFD sets the budget, the communities have to come up with the money, however the communities decide to come up with the money. We, we, we've chosen to do it out of general fund forever, right? The townships have a public safety bunch, because, because they can't, they don't have enough in general to cover, so they have to have that.
What Marie was talking about.
Right, the, the risk is, the risk is, as Joe said, is that under that scenario, the current scenario. Every five years they gotta go back to the voters and say, hey, we need to re-up for this amount. Luckily, we haven't had to deal with the issue of what happens if they don't pass it. Okay, and that's where, having reserves to cover another vote by that community or whatever, what Justin's talking about is. Scrapping the interlocal. New structural mechanism, creating an authority. The authority would represent the entire district, all the voters would vote on whatever the villages that they asked for to pay for public safety. And the. Twenty five thousand residents within that district, if you will, would say yes or no, we wanna pay six mills for. Fire or, or no, it's too much, or, you know.
And I was kinda adding to that a little bit because, because you were talking about lowering our mills, you know, to cover that if it, if it happened, but at the same time. If something happens down the road, we're gonna have to come up with funds to try to help subsidize possibly worst case scenario.
Well, well, yeah, I mean, you know, you, if you go with the authority model, and the authority puts out a millage. And the millage fails. At that point, yeah, you're, 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 either the authority is going back out for another vote, or the communities are looking for other ways to fund that service.
Thank you.
But there's a distinct difference though too, because. An authority would have to have this meeting, right?
Right.
They wouldn't just come forward, the fire department wouldn't just come forward and say, here's a budget, you know, this is what I wanna spend, and there's no. There's no. Constrained, right, the only constraint is the pushback of the communities. And frankly, two out of three communities can decide what they wanna do, so, I mean.
Today.
Today, yeah, and the thing is that authority, the other part of it was, is like we talked about, I mean. If you took all three districts and you took the DAFD budget, the miller Drake in the city would not be five. For the DAFD, and it's not five in Webster Township, and it's not five in Dexter Township.
Right.
So, I mean. Back to the, whether it's fair or not, I mean, it depends on what you think is fair, I mean, if you think fair means that. They pay less than somebody in the city does, then, yeah, it's fair to them, but it, you know. I can't think of a single other service that would do that way.
Well, we're getting close hopefully to having a meeting with the other communities. Talk about this.
Separate from the DFD.
Yeah, because it's not a DAFD thing. Right, I mean, DFD is set up under the interlocal, this is, this is, this would be a decision by the communities to go with a different. Model, right? Different organization, right?
Well, and I mean, to Justin's point about it, the authority goes forward with the millage, I mean, the community is gonna say. This is what we're willing to fund from, uh. Uh, public safety.
By virtue of a yes or no vote.
Yeah, yeah, which is what they're doing in Webster and Dexter Township, right, I mean, that's what they're doing right now.
Yeah, I, I was not able to make the last DAFD meeting that occurred last two Thursdays ago. But it's my understanding from talking to Karen that. Webster Township has asked, what's the charge of meeting? Their board, the, you know, the board's not all that easy to get along with sometimes. They wanna know what the charge of having the community's meeting is.
The charge?
What's the goals of meeting, why are, why are we meeting? They want some, they want somebody to prepare a reason why they should come together, written.
Because we're the partners.
Well, we're, well, we're talking about it more than they are.
Well, for a reason.
Correct. Our way to meet their needs.
But when you're, when you're the, when you're in the situation where it's, it's working for you. You can ask those questions.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, you know. Everybody talks a good camp, but when push comes to shove. And then part of it's because of the interlocal, that, which is done out of necessity. But, uh, times have changed. I don't know, there's the pushback on, uh.
At the end of, of the day, as the times change, but we're also like. We're adults, right, we're, this is, we need to. Understand, but Dexter is my community, right, I, like, if this is, if we have an issue. That is. In this paper, it's right over here, right, I'm not going to be like, well. You know, they really don't wanna talk to us, and like, I understand that you guys don't wanna talk to us, but conversation needs to happen, must have. Have this one you stocked out, because clearly, like. I mean, I can't just be like, well, I tried and give up, because next year budget comes about, what are we, what are we gonna be?
Look, Pablo, the, you, what, everything you're saying is spot on, okay, the, the reality is, is that every community has. Certain personalities that drive the. The way things go, yeah, I could be accused of that, I'm a personality, right? Webster has people that are interested in this, they may have some people that are not interested in it, and I'm not picking on Webster. Dexter is the same way, I know that Dexter Township is very interested in having this conversation, because. Uh, their public safety millage just barely covers what they need for this cost, and we haven't. We have tried to figure out how to have a well-funded fire department. And control the costs, and we don't have the control the cost part under control yet. And, and, and the, and the, 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 the hard part is, the model. The fire service model. Works against. The betterment of, of citizens sometimes, because, well, no, well, no, well, here's the problem, here's the problem, every three years, you renegotiate. A contract with the firefighters. Okay, and, and what they do is they go to the previous three or four departments that just renegotiated. And they use that as leverage for. Salary support. And it, and it's, it's a, it's a continuous spiral up. And there's no way to get, there's no way to get out in front of it.
Not with a service model.
Not, not with a service file.
Yeah. But yes, I, I do agree with you, um, maybe someone a little bit more soft, soft spoken needs to be, uh, other doing the talking when. The conversation, you know.
No, 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 we, we.
Saying overall, that's.
I hear what you're saying.
In order to.
It's good to be, it's good to be blunt, pe- people, people need to know what your position is. You know, the, you need to get the, the, the problem needs to be well defined for people to understand your position, I think, and I think there's a number of people in this room that. Do a very good job of that. One of the things that I need to do, we have a, um. The DAFD model has a very unique role, there's a, the seventh community member. Or board member is, is supposed to be representing the entire district. Okay, everybody puts two people on there and then. It rotates around, but, but then, in this case, that person is John Scharf. Uh, very good guy, very hard worker, he's involved in a lot of things in the community. Um, but he's in that role, he's also a Webster Township trustee. And. We need to make sure that he is sitting at the table representing all three communities. Not just the one that he also sits on the other board for. And. You know, I probably need to talk to John about that. Because, because he, he, he has, I think, on the board, I mean, the, the problem is the DFD board doesn't determine whether we go to a funding model. A different funding model. This, the communities do. Right, all the DFD board does is implement the interlocal. But, you know, we wear different hats depending on what night of the week it is and where we're sitting, right?
So, we can't make any of these communities come to the table to discuss this.
Correct.
Okay, but it does give us a direction, I don't think our only direction is to have all. I don't think our only direction is to have all three communities on board, maybe. You know, but we need to start somewhere and figure out where we're at. To make the, to make the next step. I would hope, like you said, that we can all sit down as adults and have a conversation about it and try to figure out what. What's best for everybody.
And I mean, I mean, truthfully, if we wanna drive this, probably the best thing we could do is pass a motion that says. We're interested in exploring an authority for fire services. And sending that letter off to the other two communities.
Okay. Put it on the agenda, put it on Monday nights.
What's that? I didn't hear you go.
It said, put it on the agenda, put it on Mondays nights.
Good son?
Yeah.
Well, we don't make decisions today, but that could be added to the agenda if you want. I'm just saying that, that would, that would move the needle. Significantly, if, if everybody's convinced that's what. That's why I'm using the word explore, I'm not sure if we're there or not, but we need to get people to the, we need to invite people. To participate in that discussion. Is what I'm suggesting.
We can't make him talk to us, but at the same time, like, can't make me like. Forced to be part of it either, right? And it's like, can't force people to do what they don't want.
Right, but it gives us direction.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
You need direction.
Would, 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 would you like me to prepare a resolution for the May twelfth meeting?
Yes.
Absolutely.
I don't know, you know, it's, it's gonna take a lot of cooperation to get it done. But, you know, it, it. There's certainly, there's certainly, you can certainly see the, the benefits of it. It does, it does give up some local control. Which maybe is not a bad thing. You know, I, I haven't spent a lot of time talking to other communities about whether they like their authority or not. You know, but that could be part of what we do.
I mean, control, but flexibility, definitely, flexibility, it. It restrains you, contains you, right, to your now. Solid, that it's not include that type of revenue or decision-making process, for sure.
Well, we are starting somewhere, so that's.
Right.
Right.
So, um, the list. Yeah. Trouble with DAFD is they have a fluid financials. They never know what's gonna happen till the end of the year. And then they tell you what they need for revenue stream. That's all based on the interlocal because of runs divided by cost, even though seventy percent of our cost is labor. Them unable to give us a timeline of what's going on or expect, expectation doesn't allow for us to do a steady budget. Across several years projection or anything other than based on, what am I seeing, twenty-five thousand dollars a year or anything? So. The hard part. Will be, and I'm not sure what the role is in the interlocal about the at-large member. I don't think it really defines anything, going to Sean's point. Instead of representing a community, representing the area. It might be a good starting point, but I haven't looked at the interlocal to see if that's specifically addressed. And I don't wanna start pissing contests with them, John, John's the wrong guy to start down with. Um, until there's some kind of parity, they'll, they'll never budge. There's no reason for them to budge. So by issuing your statement. They come to the realization that we have three options, we can cooperate, we can talk, or Dexter can pull out. We lose all of our equipment. But we don't have to deal with them no more.
Astros. Uh, we can, we could lose a lot of equipment, Astros, right, that's.
No, it's in the interlocal. You lose everything, except the building, isn't that true?
Yeah. It was, so, so, yeah, I, 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 I believe that, like, we, we, we walk with the, 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 the big question mark is, um. On, on, um, long-term debt.
So with an estimate annual budget of one point five, can we financially? And fiscally, provide for a fire department just for the city of Dexter? Is that enough? Equipment, people?
So, um, just to, so that's similar, but. Similar option to the area authority, right? Um, but now you're saying instead of the whole area.
Just off city of Dexter.
Option number two is. Dexter Authority, literally, not Dexter Area, Dexter Fire Authority.
Dexter City.
Just, just us, just us, right?
Well, and, and then at, at that point, it would make more sense to do a, um. A, well, I, I was gonna say a, a, a specific, uh, public safety millage.
Correct.
For, for just the city.
Right, right. Which theoretically, you could argue would be a little bit. More strenuous because the other two townships already have, uh, the precedent of voting for the public knowledge. Uh, public safety millage, and only this community out of the three would have a novel experience of voting for that type of millage.
Yeah.
Um, so at least the voting part, um, one is more strenuous than the other. Just numbers wise, right, or experiences wise.
It's always numbers.
Yeah, but I mean, city of Mylan, right, is about our size, nothing, last time I looked, one point four.
Give or take.
One point four million. Dollars for their fire safety budget.
Is that what it is?
Hmm. I. And I heard of the thing, I tried to make this point last time. When we had one station and we were staffing one station. Everybody benefited from having one station doing. And the townships have driven this by themselves by saying, we wanna have a station, which is understandable. I'm not saying, you know, obviously you wanna add people out there close because this, to provide services stuff. But essentially what we have now is three stations that are gonna be fully staffed. So it's like, okay, well, at that point, you know, there is no. There is no benefit to the larger community of having them all combined. I mean, frankly, I think we'd be better off with our own fire department because. We wouldn't be driving the vehicles twenty-five miles every single time they went out, they'd be going two miles. I mean, you know, we've talked about trucks that have had hundreds of thousands of miles on them. Where they're out, I mean, we've had a couple of times where they flipped over on the roads out there because they're a lot more dangerous out on those roads than they are in the city. We have fire hydrants all through the city, we don't have fire hydrants in the township. I mean, there would be a lot of advantages to saying, we're gonna treat our X number of square miles. It's very, you know, back to what you said, Pablo, it's very aside, right? We're just saying, we're just gonna do our stuff and screw everybody else, and that's not what I'm saying. I very much like the idea of having a cooperative fire department. But you can't make it to the point where it's to the detriment of any of the communities. The townships for a long time got service at a discounted rate because they didn't have. Uh, and, and that was the choice, right? The trade-off was, we know we're gonna have a lot of response time. But we're not gonna pay as much for public safety. Well, when it goes to the other end of the spectrum, all of a sudden, the math just doesn't work out anymore. We're essentially paying the one point five million for our portion of the DAFD. Instead of splitting up that cost that we used to split between communities so everybody benefits. Because we've set up three different stations. So, I, I, I really think, I, I think if you went back ten years ago and said, nope, we're not gonna build, the townships are, we're not gonna build fire stations. Right now, the model would be five, because we wouldn't be staffing up for as many people as we're staffing up for. And our overall costs wouldn't be what they are, you know, our budget for the, for the fire department would probably be a million dollars instead of a five. I mean, except for probably that first, where we would have to unfortunately recoup the, the, the equipment cost, which. Yeah. We do have to dump it, crap, that sucks, but yes, yeah.
Well, and to Joe's point, the equipment is also different. Because right now, the equipment is based on the needs of all the area. We can revisit of what equipment we need if it's just the city of Dexter.
Very good point.
However. There is a feeling of area-wide.
That is true.
And. I'm not sure I wanna lose that, I kinda use that as, uh, we ally together, we're able to fend off a lot of crap. Because we have a. A, a size advantage or a united front or whatever you wanna call it. So I don't wanna get everybody mad, but I'm looking for something that's a little more equitable. Or at least some way to level it so I can get an estimate on what's going on. And not see it go up, I, I can't do the percentage, but you know, twenty-five grand a year, that's unsustainable. I mean, you look back, what was it, it was like six hundred thousand at twenty? Or eighteen or whatever you put in here?
Yeah, our, our, our costs have almost doubled in.
They have.
Four, five years.
Yeah. Yeah, that's unsustainable.
That's the angle we got.
Right, that's it right there.
Well, you know, wanna go back to the days when, no, SIO Township and Dexter weren't in good graces. Because at the end of the day, that hurts our residents. That, you know what I mean? And we don't, I don't think we wanna go there, but at the same time. We gotta be affordable, it's gotta be affordable and it's gotta be equal between all three communities. Or at least you pay for what services are provided.
Ideally, we need to call in SIO, but I think there's still a hurt feeling there, so. And I have no idea what's going on in their government.
Could be another option, too.
Well, I, that's another thing I wanted to say, we are covered on three sides with SIO. Um, so it, it benefits us to have a conversation with SIO and see what. Collaborations can, can be, and fire department to fire department, right? A and W is in SIO.
Yeah.
So, also, and, and, and that's, that's one option that, that hasn't been thrown out is, what would SIO charge if we wanted to contract with them?
At, at least, you know, that can be, I like the idea of us having our own. But until we get us to the full what our own looks like, could be some level of. Contract and collaboration with SIO also to.
There, there, there's also the, the Chelsea area fire authority, which I, I don't, I don't know what their capacity to potentially contract is, but.
Yeah, I'm more thinking of until we have our staffing, until we have our equipment, which will not be overnight.
So, so far, just to. Post-conversation, three options now, right? One, the most fluid transition, Dexter Area Fire Authority. The next least smooth transition, Dexter City Fire Authority. And third option is contact with just the neighboring municipality. Then, just for the sake of like having a conversation with them, just. We're not fully lost in the sauce, we don't know what we're gonna do, but have options.
Yeah, we, we just have to remember that we've, we've also. Grown in our ability to. Respond to the different things that were, that the fire services. Primarily set up to respond to. I mean, when we, when we had the station, when we had the only station in the city. Those are the days when we had two people on, or maybe one person on full-time. That everybody else supported from an on-call position.
Yeah.
Okay, and there are terms used in the fire service that I'm now is. Good at repeating or using appropriately, but there's certain runs that are, they, they call them all-call. Okay, a fire is certainly that, everybody responds on a, on a, on all-call. Because they don't know what they're gonna deal with on a fire. Okay, if it's a, if it's a heart attack or a, uh, something like that, it's also an all-call because. You don't know when the call comes in, whether you're dealing with somebody who's. Five foot, a hundred pounds, or. Six-five, two hundred and eighty pounds, and. At some point, that, that, that person has to be lifted. Which, you know, sounds like. That's anyway, we have the, right now, we're set up with. Almost two in Dexter, two in Webster, two in Dexter Township. With the idea that when an all-call is needed. Three or four people can get there. Okay, so they're not, and they're not wondering, in the, in the on-call situation, the previous on-call situation. The question was, the reason they called everybody is because they didn't know who was gonna be, who was gonna be the people coming. It's not like, oh, Joe's free from the hardware store, okay, you know, you don't know, you, you called because you needed the response. Now, we have those, so we, we've grown from a. An on-call. Type operation to a full-time staffing, and there's certainly, there's a cost for that, and that's what we tend to, we're focused on because of the cost. But the, but from a service perspective. What I don't wanna see us do is go back to where we think we've got a model that's. Whether it's just us or whatever. But we can only afford to hire two, so we're, we're reliant on somebody else anyway when we really need help. Um, we gotta be careful with. But we gotta, we gotta, we gotta not just look at it from the cost side. That's, that's certainly the driver of, of most of these conversations today. Um, and just offering that there's other, there's other things, there's other areas to learn about how. How if we had our own, you know. Typically, mutual, mutual aid is, mutual aid is a, is a topic that every fire department. Takes pride in, you go when somebody else needs help. Okay, it, it's the basis, it's like the second basis of what you're doing, you're caring for everybody, you're supposed to, but when somebody needs help. Whether it's in your community or outside, you'd go, you know, and. And I believe we're stronger as a region, I believe we're stronger with multiple communities than we are. If we just try to be ourselves. Um, that's why I think the, that's why I suggested, let's explore the authority. Option and see what the other communities feel about that and how you might set that up and. Let them, because they're gonna have some things to wrestle with also. You know, to Joe's point. You know, their, their percentage of the pie might go up. But maybe, maybe they're willing to do that to keep the regional group together. Okay, but they, they're gonna have to wrestle with some of those things. Um. So now you said taking the first steps important, I mean, you know, we gotta, we gotta do something, that we, we can't just talk about it by ourselves. It won't get, it won't get solved here.
Yeah.
What, what, what we can do here is be mindful of how we pay for things until we get those conversations started. And that's why the trading, that, that's why the.
I agree with, with that, Sean, I think the, the ability for us to think about our options, whether they're optimal or not. Um, at least gives us some leverage of. An, an ability to think outside of the box, right? Um, I think this, this is a good exercise, but I do agree that the first step is the exploration of the authority with. Uh, with others. But, but it is nice to feel that there are options.
May I?
Yes, please.
Um. I think, uh. Our strongest point right now is to send them the letter of resolution or whatever you want. And, uh. We gotta do, we think we gotta acknowledge there's an issue, which we done by sending this letter. We gotta assess, assess all our options, going alone to redoing the interlocal, but then we have to act on it. So by showing that we are sending a resolution, we show our intent. Which people hate because that means you're serious now, you put it on the record. And I'm sure that everybody on the fire board is well aware of our discontent about. Our discontent about, you know, uh, cost, so it's been brought up, it's nothing new. So it's, it's our responsibility basically to. Choose the lesser of two evils, which benefits our residents the most. I'd love to see it work out where it's perfect for us, I don't know if that's feasible with the current board makeup as it is now. What's in it for them? That's what it's always gonna come down to, so what is in it for them? They're gonna get lower IP rating, insurance rating, they're gonna get better coverage. Are they gonna pay less than they're paying now?
Get worse coverage.
Well, I don't wanna be too dicky about it, you know? Just, these are, as you look at your needs and wants, I need to look at my needs and wants. Nothing personal. Nothing personal.
So last meeting, we approved putting the ballot language. On the August election as area. What's that date again?
August sixth, sixth, okay. Uh, August fifth.
You think I ain't hit the polls?
May, May sixth, August fifth.
That's, that's, so, um. Do we, when do we wanna start talking about how we're gonna communicate? Is that the newsletter? Newsletter for that?
We can, we can include it in the newsletter.
Some of these are idle thoughts, okay, so that, that's good, um, have you had a chance, I know with all the budget, to take a shot at the lease?
Not yet.
Okay.
Justin, I'm sorry.
Karen asked, Karen asked me if I had seen a draft yet, I didn't know, so I thought I'd ask it. All right, well, well, relative to what we're doing here, reviewing the general fund budget, the next workshop. Will get a look at streets. Water, sewer primarily, right, than any other miscellaneous stuff that you got that goes out there.
Yeah, to 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 trees, put them in replacement.
Yeah, okay. Do we have a date set for that next meeting?
We do not, that, that, that was one thing I wanted to bring up to, to ask.
Standard, I mean, the two biggest things were, well, we spent the majority of time on that, so.
Yeah, I I'm, I'm, I guess I'm trying to be forward looking here a little bit, uh.
But, but, but then we, we can always come back to general funding that as well, too.
Well, yeah, I might have another thought.
Absolutely, I hope so.
Well, it happened, it happened at one time.
I love, I love, I love Ray that you're back.
I wrote it down, hold on.
Um, what, what, what are you, how much time do you need to get those together? What are you, what are you thinking works?
Yeah, that I'd probably need another week and a half, two weeks to, to, to wrap those up.
Do you wanna do a doodle poll to get dates?
Do you have a more professional name than doodle poll?
That's, that's, that is the, the, the name of the software.
Doodle on a scripter pole, that's all. I don't know what it is with me, maybe I was born in the wrong.
Yes, get in there. Do you, do you wanna, do you wanna canvas the board to see when?
Uh, so, so also, did you just, just, uh, general, more general question, do, do, do people, uh, does, does everyone? Enjoy the Saturday mornings or would, or like would Wednesday, well, I know Murray doesn't, but, um.
Oh, Saturday and then.
I like the Saturday morning.
Ain't all of us up at the bar.
Well.
Um, Saturday's time, yeah, yeah, um.
So I mean, the, 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 the final thought to that statement was versus like a Wednesday evening, but. It sounds like everybody was kinda shaking their head about Sa- Saturday mornings.
I've seen the marine.
I could, I can do either, but I, it wasn't, it'd be nice if it was eight thirty, but twenty on Saturday, so we can still.
Well, two weeks from today is the tenth.
I will be out of town.
Oh, me too, I'll be a drill.
Okay.
Yeah, I gotta look, see if I'm out of town.
Well, 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 that's why I'm going, I I'm, I'm out of town the week of the seventeenth. And then, and the, and, and the fa- and the following week is Memorial Day weekend, so. I think Wednesdays are a better option in May, in the month of May is where I'm going.
Okay.
Let's pick one this time, it is what it is.
I think it's ACH year.
Would you rather do this as the seventh too soon?
Uh, so, 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 so seventh is, is ACH.
Oh, yes, the fourteenth then.
Okay.
Yeah, six o'clock.
Seven AM.
I will not be here on the.
Oh, you can't do the fourteenth?
No, I'm out of town again. But it's the Wednesdays in May is kind of insane, but, um, so I'm just gonna miss.
Does the thirteenth work, Ryder?
Um, the thirteenth works, I'm here the thirteenth.
It's Thursday, Tuesday?
Okay, so let's plan Tuesday the thirteenth then.
Thank you, I appreciate.
No, that's good, that's fine, I'm glad you, I'm glad you spoke up.
Six PM.
We're trying to be done a couple hours.
I mean, the other one should be pretty cut and dried, I would assume. Streets.
Tim's got a long list of things to spend money on, I know.
What is, what is, enterprise fund, so it needs to be there to fund it, it needs to be there to fund it.
Well, and, and then for, for, for water, we know we have things like, um, the, the water main is part of the roundabout project, it's gonna have to come out of water. Um.
Oh, Danny.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
That, 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 the, 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 those sorts of things.
Did you look at them well results from the forty eight, what do you think?
Don't think there's anything wrong with it other than, I don't know. Don't we have to have a safety zone? If there's not enough room, there's. But didn't we do something special with the well at the high school? We got that. I haven't read before, guys, I.
I mean, there's.
There, there's like an exception.
Well, the discussion was what is it, right? And in the case of where this well is, it's homes, right? It's residential. It's not like it's a auto repair shop or a dry cleaner or something.
Right, no, but it's, it's, it's a subject.
Oh, in the adjacent?
I mean, I know exactly how far it is exactly, but, uh, you have to have that certain amount radius, your state requires it, and it's because of. Flutes in the realm.
Yeah, yeah. Is there a septic field that's in the, in the radius?
I, I think there is, um, we had to take a look again, I went up there to. It's, it's a great, I like the location, if they can make the work, I think it's a good location, because it's off to the back a little bit. Um, it's close to our, our infrastructure we're gonna do, so I, I do like the location, I'm hoping. If, if it goes through, I mean, there's a couple things I have to turn above, but I know that's one for safe. We can ask them for forgiveness and then they might, so.
Yeah.
I think we got a reduction on the one, of the size of, of protection around the well.
And, 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 uh, I think that, that, like, there, there, I know there's benefits of like having a wellhead protection program.
Yes, yep.
And, and, and maybe, maybe that's part of it is you get a, get a potential reduction in.
Then the only other thing is you gotta look at the potential of what the other properties, how hard way they're gonna be with whatever protection area you put in, because you really don't have any control over the rest of it. What goes on on that property, other than our homes, potentially.
They're gonna put in septic, do you know?
You don't have to, because they're not the rest of that.
I just saw something in their minutes where they had a vote about not enclosing their disposal field. Per section.
How deep is the well?
Two, it's over two hundred, right? Yeah, yeah, I don't know. Now, I'm gonna look it up again, so it's, I wanna say one eighty, two hundred seventy seven. I mean, it's, the other thing is too, is it's. The year allows certain amount as it goes down.
Well, that's why I'm.
And it's, it's really crooked. Um, so what we would have to go to is smiracle pump, which we'll have now, but the name, that's for the special fitting on that pump, so it doesn't play against the walls of the casing. Um, I'm not a big fan of that, I'd rather see more straight or turbine than what we have in the well life. But.
I'll be explaining that a little bit, the difference between the smiracle and the.
Well, a turbine's easier to pull out, I mean, it's just a matter of pulling straight up and it's, it's a lot less than what necessary a, a smiracle would be, um. The maintenance on the motors are right there, they're not pulling it to do maintenance like they would on a smiracle. Um, smiracles with the VFDs we have, if you have a turbine ramped up with VFD, smiracle has to go zero thirty feet like that. Because it has to get generally water to cool down within itself, so there's comparables.
So the Ryan Drive wells that we have, they're over two hundred feet, we got two hundred feet of pipe. With a pump on the end of it, so when we do maintenance, it's, it's a pretty big cost to us to pull all that pipe. And then with the well that we have at the high school, they've got molds on it, it's like a high service pump, right? It could go down fifty, sixty feet, but you'd have to pull those bo- bolts out, but like. Tim said, that motor's up top, VFD's right there, right? And it's a, a slow ramp up, which saves us a crack ton of electricity costs anytime you can have a VFD. But with that well being crooked, like he said, he's gonna have to investigate that because you're not gonna get a turbine down. And you're gonna have to try to put, you know, a hundred, hundred fifty feet of pipe on an angle, so we're gonna have to look into that.
Why is, but they had to drill?
I have no feelings why, because I think they did have the right people drilling it. No, I know it's nothing against them, it's just they're more residential person.
Right.
And I think they bought a commercial person, and they, you know, I'm not bagging anybody, I think they do good work in the residential area and, and, uh, but. As far as this one, you know, A, A, maybe at the beginning it has a standard, and they're like, well. So, um. It's a great wall, I, I do think it produces. You know, we got the, we got the arsenic in it, so it's gonna have to, we're talking about filtration. Um, which is gonna cost more.
Talk, talk about what?
To, 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 to do our, 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 our arsenic removal.
Oh, okay, I, I didn't hear it.
Yeah.
So, and we got a cost estimate, and you guys were asking about, so F and B wrote up, well, Justin Pat, so we'll talk about that, I don't want to.
It was included in the packet.
What's that?
The, 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 the F and V estimate was included in the packet.
So, yeah, so just my, my thoughts on Monday would be to let them talk first and then you guys talk second. Is that, is that okay? We'll hear, hear what they have to say about everything and then you can follow up and talk.
And Dan's gonna be there, so, I mean.
Damn Whalen.
These are man, huh, these are man, yes, so.
How long does a meeting work?
An hour.
They're, they're kinda long-winded.
Six, seven.
Whoever they can. Only hour, I'll see you in forty-five minutes.
Well, the la- the last meeting we had was in, what, January?
Yeah, I was, did you, I think it was January or February.
You know, so that, I wanna hear what their updates are, give them a chance, since they're the ones that question the annexation. And then focus on the well from our end, what, what our team's done. And then we'll use the rest of time wherever we go.
Do you think that, that Dan could come up with the information on the AWWA standards on? Whatever is going on with.
He, 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 he did mention in his report that it, it isn't.
And then also what we're gonna need for, um, area that we got overtaxed, that would be nice. A well, a protection area, she's saying.
Okay, so, so let me just keep going on general stuff, so we, we've got a second, second meeting planned for Tuesday, May thirteenth. Um, which meeting will we set the?
May twelfth.
At May twelfth, we'll, so we'll set the public hearing date.
Correct.
For the first meeting in June. Okay, and we'll have a ser- a number of public hearings there, right? Is that to do the?
Well, water sewer rates and, and budget.
And but, and no, no. Millet rates, right? Okay, and then typically. Typically after the public hearing at the first meeting in June. We would adopt the millet rates, Marie needs those. As she works into her next fiscal year. See, I slipped that in there. To get the, to get the tax bills out there. Uh, gotcha, gotcha. And then we formally adopt the budget at typically the second meeting in June.
Yes.
Right? So when we, when we, when we set the millet rate, I'm sorry, when we schedule the public hearing. Hearings on May twelfth for June, whatever the first meeting in June is. Um, the ninth, I guess. We will, the public will see a, a, a version of what we just looked at. The dra- the draft budget will be in that May.
Yeah, and, 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 and I'll, I'll have to have draft of, of the, the water and sewer.
Absolutely, yeah, which we'll then discuss the following night, but at least it's there for public comment. I'm just saying, just, since this is your first time through this, uh, that's kind of the. How this, these next two months play out, we do at least one more of these work sessions. If there's something that we're stuck on or we wanna talk about again, we can always schedule a third one, typically we do them in two. Right? Yep, okay, and then reminder that the second meeting in May is on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh. Because of Memorial Day. On the twenty-sixth, I just, I'm just thinking aloud of the columns.
Correct.
Um, I'm gonna try and have student recommendations at the first meeting in June. For the new student positions, I gotta get, I haven't done anything with those, but I'll get with you on that, but that's my plan.
Okay.
Is everybody okay with the assumptions that Judge, that Justin used for staff increases? When you've got four percent budgeted?
Yeah, four, 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 uh, so it's, um.
Union's three plus step.
Correct.
And nine, you, and you've got four.
Are, are we, were we shooting for ending at eleven?
Uh, so.
We can go as long as anybody wants, I just, you know, wanna get the general stuff down, go ahead, Joe.
Wait, on, on the general stuff, so one of the questions I had was on page three. Um. The first set of bullet points lists out the six hundred and fifty thousand for Mill Creek, but then. In the second set of bullet points, the four that are below, it says following our driving factors for twenty-six, twenty-seven. It lists the two fifty for the Mill Creek Park Playground Project again.
Yeah, I, 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 I think that that was a mistake, I think that, 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 that should not be there.
Okay, um, so just in general thoughts about the overall general budget. Um, I do like the option three for the millage, I think that's a good idea. Um, as long as we can continue to fund the road projects that we had planned, um, the map sale. A- assuming that there's a yes vote, um, and unless it sells quickly. I mean, we're gonna have to take, I would assume we're gonna take out of reserves and then replenish by putting the money back into it. So I mean, it's sort of a.
It, 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 it helps our reserves more than.
It does help our reserves, but it's sort of a don't care as far as the budget concerns, as far as I'm concerned.
It, 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 it is not factored.
Yeah, yeah, um. I, I do also agree that it would be helpful if the DDA participated in the public safety, I think that's a good plan. Um, I think, you know, we had some of the discussion about the parking, one project that I think would be very good for, for the DDA. Is what I have noticed in driving down Forest and Grand Street, and I would assume Grand, we would probably try and target for. After the, uh, uh, the other development that's planned to go in there between the cemetery and Grandview. If and when it's gonna happen, but, um, both on Forest and on Grand Street, the, the parking that is there is very, uh. Random, it's, it's all different ways, some places it's parallel, some places it's straight in, um, some places there's none defined, it's just. Um, it would seem that, I mean, and while I appreciate the fact that we have all the parking lots that we do, the gravel lots. Those lots aren't gonna be there, right? I mean, the plan is to build buildings there, we won't have that parking there. So, I mean, Forest and Grand, aside from the, the property at the corner of Broad and Forest. That combined with the house and the parking lot there to be developed, Forest and Grand are largely developed, it seems like. A conservative effort to say, how do we maximize the odd street parking? Um, you know, we have the right ways that we have, you know, for instance, right in front of the cemetery. There's generally parallel parking there, we could, we could go to, you know. Nose in or angled parking, some type of angle parking there, same thing, those businesses at the, the broad end of Grand Street. And then when you get down to where the, um, the apartment buildings are, you know, they just have nose in. You know, straight in parking there, um, and I don't know, and then, but on the other side with Grandview. Then there's parallel parking, and it, it seems like that those two streets could be. Optimized or updated, and eventually they're gonna have to fit, and obviously, you know, it would be good to have something that. I'll tell with Broad Street as well, once it comes in.
And, and I, I would, so also, you know, in addition to kind of the, the trailhead parking that, that we've been talking about, which, which. Theoretically would use so- some of that space. Theoretically would use so some of that space in the grand and broad area. Um. I would think that when we go into resurface or redo grand, we would look at it more from a.
Yeah.
Resurfacing and streetscape.
Mm hmm.
And how 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 does parking play into that's into that streetscape?
And that could help in to develop, you know, all of them as well, so. Um.
And 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 I think generally, you know, we've kind of been holding off on Grand Street with the hope that thirty forty five broad would get redeveloped. Cause what we don't wanna have happen is we put in a brand new street.
And then bang it up.
And then bang it up with with, uh, with constructed traffic.
Um, on the, um, the website, I I think actually the website is pretty good, I'm sure there's things that we wanna do. Uh, that seems like something that potentially we can put off, um, if we needed to, um. If the funding is set up for it, I would, and it's an option, and we need it as an option on the budget. I think we should consider, we could move the playground out at Mill Creek out to, and I understand that getting it done at the same time with the fire department, I think that's a great idea. Um, but if. Needed for budgetary reasons, it seems like it's something that we could move out to, uh, fiscal year twenty six, twenty seven. Um, and the last thing was, uh, a couple of things that I brought up at the last meeting. Um, about the public safety unit at schools and then also the water, uh, that we do with the schools as well. I think those are two things that we should, um, revisit as a potential opportunities to help on the budget for those two different areas.
Um, wh- and 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 on the 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 schools PSU is, would you like me to bring that as a item here in the next? Month or two for for discussion?
Yeah, yeah, I think that'd be a good idea.
I am. My thought. Joe was that maybe the DDA could pick up the other half.
Other half of.
The the police service unit. I did, I haven't specifically stated it that way yet, but my my thought was. That. I mean, we we. The the schools get the benefit of this that person, the for the eight months of the school year. Maybe the DDA pays for the other half, taking that burden off the city. During our busy summertime. That was sort of my thought, but I had I had that. Took because again, to 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 define it for the DDA.
I I know there's a benefit to both the schools and they're supposed to be the city, I'm not convinced that we get very much benefit just because the.
I know.
Scheduling goes, but the fact of the matter is, is that is a community wide benefit. And what should really happen is the DDA shouldn't be paying for it, the city shouldn't be paying for it, we should have an agreement with the townships. Surrounding, including Silo, including, you know, parts of Lodi that are, or, uh, whatever the other one is, Lima Township. I mean, it's not our. Cost. We make up a. Severe minority of the school district, and yet for some reason the city's funding. And I and I could see at the point in time that the argument was, you know, we're gonna have to deal with it, so let's let's do something like that. But I think, yeah, I mean, literally, we talked about public safety, we talked about the cost, it's another, you know, eighty or eighty five thousand dollars that. We're we're essentially donating.
Sorry, so in in your mind, if if it stayed. Half funded by the schools. And half by the community. With the broader community being. The school district.
Right, right now, we share the PSU's costs with Dexter Township and Webster Township. But essentially, you know, Dexter pays three, Webster pays two, we pay three, plus we pay a half for the schools. If it was, you know, split up the same way with Dexter Township, Webster Township, I'd be okay with that.
Okay, well then, so. The 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 suggestion then would be to to write a letter to the two townships. Asking for their shared participation in. Half of a police service unit, is that what you're? That what you're suggesting?
Sure.
Okay, so let's put that on the on agenda too then. Since we're writing letters.
No. Yeah, so I actually, that that was one item I wanted to 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 mention, not not not, we won't have to have a big discussion on it, but yeah, with Webster not not levying their mill. Um, it means that we we don't owe them anything for. Uh, Westridge and Cedars for this, uh. Uh, fiscal year.
Fantastic. Good, thirty five thousand.
Yeah, and then, uh, the last year of their millage, or the 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 last year that that we would potentially owe them something. Is, uh, fiscal year twenty six, twenty seven.
So essentially only got one more payment.
Why, why is it twenty six, twenty seven?
Uh, twelve years after.
Was it twelve? I thought it was about ten.
Yeah, twelve years.
I'll be doggone, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, as to progression about the PSU. Why is the? School district, which includes all the communities, only paying half? Like what's, uh, what's the background behind, uh, that?
Um, question, when when they did the four twenty five to build the high school, one of the things that went in there would there would be. A PSU, and I believe at the time of this. The school would pay for point eight or eighty percent of it.
Okay.
And then the city was gonna pay for twenty percent of it, the reason being was that in the summertime. When the schooling was out, that sheriff deputy would be in the city. At some point about two thousand four or five timeline, the schools came to us and said, we can't afford this, can you help us out? And we modified the contract for it to be fifty fifty split between the city and the schools. And so, um, and it's been that way ever since, so. The the problem with it, and that I mentioned a minute ago, is when it comes to the summertime when the deputy is off. The deputy takes that time for training, for vacation, and you know, so there really isn't the twenty percent that we would have technically gotten because. They use this, he uses the. The PSU uses the summertime as time to do all the things that he needs to do that he can't do during the year, and also, um. It's, um, and now and now it's half, it's not twenty percent.
So since, why isn't the school or who is about to levy new millage, right?
For it for infrastructure.
Infrastructure, yeah. Just infrastructure.
That 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 that's all that they're permitted to. Issue ba- uh, bond debt for is is infrastructure.
I agree with where you're going, they have to control the millage, everybody that is responsible for that police officer, that's where you're going.
Yeah, that's where I'm going. Right, yeah.
Right, the problem is the schools aren't allowed by state law to levy millage for operating purposes, they're supposed to do that out of the state grant per per student. They can only level but level millages for sinking funds and for facility.
So maybe that letter shouldn't be going to. And I'm not saying that, just maybe another alternative is to also send a letter to Lansing and be like, hey. You're having this police officer that can't. Or that school cannot afford and it's falling on the city. Um. It's coming in from the budget. State budget, right?
Well, and and I mean, it 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 could go to to all of the communities that. That comprise the Dexter School District as well.
Yeah, it wouldn't be all, cause we just have them.
But but, but I mean, may maybe Lima and.
Sorry.
And Silo, maybe.
School telling everybody that you want this officer, here's your share, you need to pay to this. But those, yes, there are benefits.
Just the school district has this person, so it would be very nice if the school district took care of the person that they're hiring, right? Right, and just.
Yeah, so so the 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 school ha- has holds the contract for.
That police service.
For the PSU with with Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office, and then we reimburse the schools for half, half, half PSU.
Which we don't have to do.
So that there there there's there's currently in agreement.
With the sergeant.
With the schools between, that was that was created between the village and the schools.
For how long?
Two thousand six, two thousand, bu- 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 before I got here.
It's cool.
And is this something the sheriff should be providing to the school anyway, as part of that knowledge?
So I I I I know in conversations with the sheriff and the the sheriff's team, um. They are now running into issues where the county board is putting a lot of, is trying to incorporate a lot of costs into the the millage. And so now. The sheriff is concerned that the millage dollars aren't going to be able to.
Cover.
Cover everything that. They were hoping to be able to cover.
Ooh.
You see, I'm not the only one who's kind of.
Shot fired.
Michelle, did you hear that? Get her, get her a microphone.
Did the fat.
What was, I didn't hear the question or the statement.
Flowers are good.
We're just, I'm just joking. Mar- Marie's firing shots on the way out.
As long as those shots aren't aimed at me. I don't mind.
Verbal, verbal, that.
So so and 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 just, uh, the 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 way the the millage has generally worked is that if you have your own police department. You get your portion of the millage back, um, whereas those communities that contract with the sheriff's office.
If if you have your own police department, you get a percentage of the millage back based on your population.
Hmm.
Oh, not on your actual cost?
Exactly, so everybody else is subsidizing the population.
I swear to God, they said it was based on actual cost.
It is not. Unless they changed it and they're not, it's not like the roads, the roads go back to the cities based on the millage that the cities pay.
Mm hmm.
But not public.
Yeah, no one.
Okay, there's nothing wrong with asking for help paying for.
I don't live here anymore.
So let's let's, but just set up, this won't be on the twelfth, but on the twelfth, we'll have him, we'll have a.
Mm hmm.
A topic for that, yeah. So now.
I have a few things unrelated to that, isn't that?
Okay, sure.
Um, so I, the the last, um, or my first board meeting with Huron River Watership Council. Um, something that the board passed was to, for the first time, increase, uh, membership, um, starting, um. Twenty twenty six, and their fiscal year starts in January, I believe, so that's when they start these, um, a formal letter will go to all the communities, but basically. As a city, I think we pay, um, ten cents per person or minimum of four hundred, and that will increase to fifteen cent. Per person or minimum of six hundred. Um, so keeping that in mind. Um, we had at some point, um, or last year in our budget, maybe it made it to the budget. Uh, putting some funding or consideration of funding for studies for city power or local. Municipality power and, um, fiber internet. Study, um, I don't know if that made it to the budget or.
There is not currently anything, the the the, I don't believe there's anything in.
Twenty four, twenty five.
Twenty four, twenty five, or tw- and I haven't programmed anything in twenty five, twenty six or twenty six.
Something to think about, we we did talk extensively about it, that potentially doing a study that. The main, the main thing that on the power came was after the power outages that we had and. Um, a lot of impact that our city had because of that, or residents had to to. It was more of an ex- exploration of what could that mean, cause that was something that Inaba was exploring and, um, other communities, so, um. That could be interesting to to explore, and along with that, um, a community internet, cause that's another pain point for a lot of residents in town. Um. So on page eight, um, you had the five thousand for republication and mailing of an updated resident handbook, do we send that? Hard copy to every house?
Yes.
Do we need to send a hard copy to every house?
Um, so usually only when we do a new version. Yeah, so and and it's been. It's been four or five years since we we mailed one out every.
Do you recommend that, or do you recommend then? A digital version?
We 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 do both, yeah, so so we 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 post a version on the website. And then we mail it out to to everybody.
I was looking at potential cost savings, so.
No, it's good, I I I like it, it's actually. It's a good thought, and and well, and if we just, if we mail a newsletter to everybody and said the resident handbook is online.
So we 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 were planning to replace a newsletter with the resident handbook. So essentially, we we, you know, we don't do the fall newsletter, and instead we mail out the handbook.
What's the newsletter?
Uh, four to five grand.
Just essentially.
It's it's similar. Cause like it's like.
There's a benefit, personally, this is why I think that there is a benefit of those newsletters of putting different things at different times in front of people.
Mm hmm.
Um, a resident handbook to me is something that it's a reference, um, and people. Needing to to check on something and and be reminded or find some information. Um. But maybe something we can discuss a little bit more of whether we are doing the newsletter or the the resident handbook, but I think resident handbook. You know, a lot of the information on that, sometimes I, you know, I have no idea where my resident handbook is, so I just go to our website. Right, um, so maybe.
I agree with you. I I I mean, I. I don't even know where I'd put that. It'd be in my garage somewhere.
Newsletter puts us really in front of people if there are things that timely that we need to include, like Mayor's, um, statement. Statement, or if we are having a millage and we wanna describe why, and those things are. Um, so to me, that makes more sense of having that as a publication that goes to every household versus the resident handbook, but that's just my opinion. Um.
How how do others feel? Everybody okay with it online?
Slap a QR code on the newsletter, right, if you really want the handbook, scan, put in your. Address, get it, right?
That's actually a really good idea, it should be on the front of every single newsletter, you know, access the resident handbook, if if, because to your point. It could be in somebody's garage, and they're like, where's that handbook, but if once a quarter it comes out, at least the people that look at the newsletter would say, oh, I can just scan this.
That also means that you can update the handbook more often, because if it's online, you can just pick something versus having to every four years.
Look at that, there's five thousand more of them. Look at that.
Well, well, I mean, it we're we're we'll do four newsletters now instead of three in a handbook. But, fair.
You you have eighteen thousand budgeted, okay, you called out specifically five in the in your discretion area.
True.
Alright, um, ice rink, um, something to also, I know we had it on our parking lot to really maybe revisit with the weather. Patterns that we have and I.
It's 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 unfortunately that, it's unfortunate that that. We we were getting ready to look at that, and then we had a really good winter for it.
Yeah, but still, I think there were a couple of times this winter that there was a thing of it is thawed and don't go on, and I think it's both safety and and is this something? You know, that we we take full advantage of, but something to to think about on on those things that came to my mind, um, and has already. Hasn't been said by others.
What 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 does that thirty five hundred cover? To set up a take down?
Yeah. Yeah. But and Tim.
I'm sorry, what?
They the, uh, for, um, I think it's, uh, Michigan Recreation Construction for the for the ice rink. They 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 do both setup and take down, correct?
Right. We 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 put balancing up and stuff like that, we thought of, they they put it up and take that.
Okay.
Where is the shore? The. It's in the. Some stuff down here, um, which is one of the D W L here, if this were us too, so. I think they've been buying liner the year, it seems, it's time to take it down, it's. To get trips and stuff like that.
So the new liner is part of that thirty five hundred?
It is.
Is it worth it?
So that's the thing, right, the total cost of ownership, that means our staff time, our water, and all of that together with the three.
Yeah. Yeah. The, 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 the thirty-five hundred, I don't believe, does not include our staff time or water.
Each. You probably got a stat time. Six dollars, two dollars, the time, two million, that's minimum for people, so. It's a great concept, if we have a full one.
Yeah.
You know, you, you know, it's, it never opened up, that's the reason why.
Yeah, I, 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 I know, I know when it's up, people really love it. But.
I would almost suggest, if we can afford it, it would be nice to figure out how to do it where. We could do it on a regular basis regardless.
So, so we, 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 we actually did look into that, we, we looked into, um, chillers.
Hundred and fifty thousand now.
Uh, pro- 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 at, at least a hundred.
Yeah.
I say two boy fours down by the river and get fired about when we're in the building.
Old school.
That was real.
But it would be appropriate if you find a solution, you know, not on the.
At the time. Marie, don't they make a fake service that people?
They do.
Good idea.
I mean, like in Minnesota, though, it's not, the weather patterns have not changed enough where you could do. Every school has a regular outdoor ice hockey ring, you just pour water in it, and then in the summertime. You know, it just goes away.
Maybe that's part of the school's millage, they're gonna.
And one last comment I have is on page twenty-three. Um, for, if we are putting something similar in front of, for public, um, it might be helpful that. Um, we put the maximum allowable levy, how much that is. Um, so people can compare, uh, right now that box is empty. Um, but the, the maximum we can levy is eighteen point five nine one, if my calculations are right. Um, and we do sixteen ninety-nine, so, um.
Oh, like the, like the, 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 the total allowable.
Even though the vote allows us levy up to two thousand, we can't have more than what we need to pick on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, how, however, even if there is an asterisk to say it, it's, it's. We don't do the maximum that we can do, right, right, so. Yeah, however best we can describe it, so we can still say that, um, with numbers, I think that. Help, thank you.
Well, the, the other way of saying that would, would be to add a column to that, that just says. Unleveled, military.
Yes.
And do the, do the subtraction from the left to the right. You know what I mean, and show it as, show it as unleveled. Okay. Has everybody had enough? I'd like to adjourn the meeting six minutes early. All right. No, I know, I know, I know. Is there, is there any non-arranged participation?
Thank you all, have a good day.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Staff, thanks for coming.
Nice to see you.